Call on meeting of the committee of the whole order probably made fifteen to six thirty P M. Like to do the call of order for roll call.
Mike Murray.
Here.
Richard Harrington.
Present.
Sean Zabinski.
Here.
John Glenn.
Here.
Nicole Hart. How about Peter?
Here.
Mel Peter.
Here.
Dean Peterson. Travis Schultz.
Shane, can you hear us okay?
Yes.
Shane, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right, thank you.
We have to remind everyone to use their microphones so we can, there's people attending our line. Let me see, we have someone else on line two? That's muted, I'll be watching.
Amy, can you hear us?
No, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, city clerk report? Oh, approve of minutes from the last meeting in April, April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve in the second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion here. And give us a report, report.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few notes from the clerk's office from last month. You know, we've been kind of going back, we talked last month about figuring out where we want our permanent polling place to be for elections. And just kind of going over the pros and cons of the different places. You know, it's, the police department that we had talked about is really a wonderful opportunity. However, I just don't know that it's big enough to support the growing voter base that we haven't seen. So, you know, we're, I've been talking with Joel Proz about the potential making repart- permanent polling place all the time. It would cause a lot less confusion if we, instead of being here and then being over there for the big ones. I just think having one place would be probably best for community. And it's definitely big enough, it's got more parking and handicap accessible, it's got all the things we're looking for. So I think that will likely end up being where I propose our final place to be. However, it doesn't have a generator right now, so that's something I think Kirk will probably talk to a little later. But we have a generator in the city that's being hopefully repurposed. And we're hoping that, if that can happen, that would probably make that decision. But we want to make sure we have that backup there before we finalize that stadium. Tonight you'll see a lot of alcohol license renewals because those are all up on June thirtieth. So we've got quite a few of them who've brought all their paperwork turned in, all of the proper checks and applications are, have been processed. So they'll be here for review and approval. We did complete the board review training on May eleventh. So we had a good number of members show up. We had four members there at the train, training. So I did submit our affidavits to the Department of Revenue and that's, that is a requirement before the first board reviews. That's been done. And then, this is a more recent one, but the clerk's office has actually been working with the police department, or talked with the police chief. We, right now, our process for, we're processing almost all licenses, whether that be bartender licenses, liquor licenses, farmer's market. All of those types of licenses, all get background checks done. Our process right now is the city clerk's office completes a, a background check on one system. And we pay seven dollars every time for every person that we have to run through. So if I'm applying for a farmer's market application, or a farmer's market permit that costs twenty-five dollars for the year. And if they list three people on there aside from themselves, who might, may or may not be running their booth in their absence. That's four people times seven dollars a piece, which costs twenty-eight dollars. So the, the cost of the background checks that we are doing isn't even covering the cost of the total permit cost that we charge. Then, once we're done processing it, we send it over to the police department where they also do a background check. And three different systems that they use, which tends to almost always come back as more comprehensive than the one that we're doing. So it's double work that's costing the city money where theirs doesn't cost per, per time. So because the, the statute isn't directing exactly what kind of background check that we have to do, just that it needs to be done. We've worked with the police department to eliminate the costly one on the clerk's side. So we'll be saving annually probably around twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars just on that. You know, those little things all end up over the years and I think that's going to help increase our efficiencies and also reduce cost of state. So we're still doing background checks, but we're just getting rid of some duplication of work. So that was kind of an exciting change for us in the clerk's office.
Question on that, why didn't, why didn't we have both of them in the first place? Is it redundant and why didn't we realize that?
I am not entirely sure. I think it was kind of one of those processes that was put into place a long time ago. All, any of us here weren't here when that happened. And after, like I said, the discussion between myself and the police chief and reading through the statutes and what the requirements are and what we need to do as a city to make sure we're, we're doing them and processing them properly. We didn't need that part, so I'm not entirely sure.
You're just doing it because it was done before and it got started somewhere, we don't know where that is.
Right.
It expired to all of us.
It expired.
And now you're doing review of different things.
Right, review of.
It's coming up.
Trying to find.
Good job.
Thanks, we appreciate that. And that's pretty much all I have, unless, who else has questions? Thank you.
Next time I need to turn this is Marley, the cash and investments schedule.
So I present the April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three cash and investment schedule for your approval. Can I answer any questions that you may have?
Do we have a motion for that?
Yes.
Second, take stuff, cash and investments. Schedule.
So is a motion in the second, Marley? All those in, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion here.
Okay, then I've also.
Oh, opposed?
I'll ask.
Sounds good.
I've also included the revenue and expenditures with comparison to budget through March thirty-first. In reviewing, most of our departments are around at twenty-five percent of expenditures for the year. Obviously, some, you know, our, our gas expense is higher in the winter and now we're going to taper off a little bit. So that's not true for all areas, but overall, we're looking pretty good and we're, we're plugging along according to budget. The big one I like to check obviously is wages because that should stay fairly steady throughout the year and we're on track there. I can answer any questions that you may have there, otherwise I'll move on to my report.
Just one question. When I drive through, I drive by dookie doggies. Are they up to date, how is that payback coming? I know we, they struggled COVID time and.
Yep, they had been on deferred payments through COVID and now they're back on track. We reestablished their payment schedule around this time last year and since then, they've been on track with their payments.
Did we have to extend it a little bit or something or?
Yeah, we just kind of reallocated based on, and they also had requested change in their payment date from, I can't remember if we moved it from the middle of the month, the beginning of month or vice versa. But that seemed to accommodate them better and we've had no problems since that time.
When, when are they done with?
You know, I think there's just another couple of years on that, but they do mention often wanting to pay it off early, so we'll see. But we're getting toward the end on those. Both that and the Veterans Assistance Foundation, they didn't stop paying, they, they've been paying all the way through, so.
Well, that sounds good, if we're talking about paying it up early, that means.
Right, well, yeah, we would not be opposed to that, but again, there's no obligation for them to do that, so.
Oh, that's good, got that back on track.
Yep.
Economic development money there. What else?
Then in the treasures department, we're currently collecting a third installment of tax payments due the thirty-first of May. So we have a pretty steady stream of people coming in to do that. We're still waiting for the results of our year-end audit. We have filed our year-end municipal financial report, which is due on the fifteenth, today I guess. I filed it last week, so that is done with our final numbers. I'm just waiting for the auditors to give us the year-end journal entries. And then we should have an, at least a preliminary version of the financial statements by the end of the month. So hopeful for that. As far as training, Barb attended the Municipal Treasures Association Conference, Spring Conference in Elkhart Lake at the end of April. Mass transit, we have two vans that we've been waiting on since twenty-twenty or twenty-twenty-one. Those should be arriving this week and they're larger transit vans versus the minivans. We're hoping that that will give us the ability to put more people, especially, you know, when we're servicing outlying areas or the hotels and they even have larger groups. So if I'm honest, the service isn't real excited about them, but it's what we had available to us at the time. And we're hopeful that they'll, they'll be a, a good addition. Other than that, I just wanted to mention one other thing. So a notice went out on the final assessments for the road project down by the lake that was completed last year. We've had lots of people coming in trying to get that paid within a date that was thirty days from the letter. The letter that went out was just a notice that the assessment has been finalized and those have not yet been billed. Those will be billed by my office, hopefully this week or the next, and then the clock starts ticking on payment due date. So we've had lots of people rushing in, a little bit unclear of exactly what they owed. We will be sending a bill, in a bill format, showing them what their total is. Like I said, hopefully this week or by the latest next week. So just for anyone watching who that may apply to. Yes?
I noticed when I'm looking at the revenue side of the budget comparison.
Yep.
Several line items where we're exceeding annual budget amounts, the revenue.
Yep.
Look at this, that's a three-hundred percent of budget.
Yes.
Is there other line items besides annual revenue for garbage and refugees up and annuals revenue as well? Is there any of the line items where there's a large percentage negative?
Oh, negative? I don't, well, we haven't received all of our state shared revenue, so that comes in later in the year. So that wouldn't be at that twenty-five percent marker because that's one that doesn't come evenly throughout the year. I was going to highlight another one that is in the positive and that's Shane, who has been collecting, I think he took his largest permit fee. And so his revenue side is way over budget for the year already. So he can be proud of that work there. But as far as running behind, I can't think of anything, maybe pet licenses? But I think that's not a huge percentage of our revenue, so it's not. And again, a lot of people apply for the Andrees and the Earl grants, so our grants and donations, those typically come in in the next coming months too. So that would be tracking low at this point, but I wouldn't anticipate it will be short for the year. Any other questions?
Yeah, now the mass transit thing about the vans.
Yeah.
Saying that the company isn't so happy about these bigger vans. Well, I would hope they would boost their efficiencies at least into their busy time to be able to haul more people.
Right.
All those complaints, I sure hope that they're willing to work with us and try to.
And they are.
Alleviate, especially during the high times.
Yep, and their hesitancy comes in training of staff, these are bigger vehicles than they're used to and they're rear loading, no, no, they're side loading. But they're afraid of how that's going to load. It just, it's just the training. And, and they also had to express some concerns with the layout of the van, but I don't think that's actually going to be a concern. And I'm hoping that once they see that, that will go away as well. They are down a few vehicles, there's been a couple of accidents. And again, there's been such a lag in getting these vehicles, the new vehicles to them, that they have, I think, one or two that are just down and need to be fixed. With major repairs. So any vehicles at this point, it's kind of what we were going for because we need to get more vehicles in service. They're supposed to have four drivers on the road and they currently only have three because that's all they can, that's all they have vehicles for. So that's a problem, which again, we're hoping to have fixed soon.
New vans, do they hold up, two wheelchairs or just still one?
I think just one wheelchair, but there'll be more passenger capacity behind the wheelchair. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Joe for Parks and Recreation.
Creed that. Start with the Parks Department, just busy with maintenance on our equipment and buildings, park cleanup. We had a couple of groups, National Guard come on April twenty-eighth and help us with some cleanup at Rec Park in Winnebago. And also move some off at the new playground at Veterans Park. We had St. Paul School come on May fifth, help out with some pickup, some garbage, library, different parks. Spring planting day is coming up next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth. We work with Art Talentoma, we have a Brat Friday that day as well. And that's at nine A M. at Gillette Park and Comfort Station. So anybody's available, come on down. We do all our plantings at the boulevards, the downtown planters, the hanging baskets, and also our parks and all the different areas in town. So it's a big day, hopefully the weather this year is sunny, last year was pouring rain, but we still got it done. And we also have a Brat Fly for Art Talentoma, they help with sponsorship with the different things as well. A new playground was erected in Veterans Park, we'll be putting up the swings this week. We had to wait a few weeks for the concrete for the swing sets. And then also, the big news is bids are due May thirty-first in the Public Works Office at ten A M. for our ball field complex. And then hopefully all goes well with that. And then we'll have a park board meeting on June fifth to discuss that as well as where we're at with the ICE Center and see how those things go together. And then make a recommendation probably at the June council meeting and committee of the whole to see what, if they line up within our budgeted amounts. And get both of those hopefully moving forward for our community for that. Winnebago Park, you can see there's still some activity going on down there, weather permitting. Hopefully, the new restroom will be available Memorial Weekend, that's what they've said. Chippewa Concrete will be there tomorrow to start with finally getting that front plaza poured in concrete. So and then we're just chipping away on the odds and ends. The trail is prepped and we're just working with the Public Works, they're going to be doing that, but they're busy. And Kirk probably cover it with the crack ceiling, so as soon as they get caught up with some of that, they could turn and continue to help us out. We really appreciate that. Help with all they do for our Parks and Rec with, with their groups and equipment and staff. Recreation programs, we had signups starting for T-ball, we're finalizing tennis. We have a new kids' running club that we're sponsoring this summer, adult softball signup. We have seven teams currently, waiting to hear back from a few more, but that starts next Wednesday, the twenty-fourth as well at Bud's Ballpark. And finishing up our gymnastics program here this, this month of May for all our exhibit building at Rec Park. Aquatic Center, we're starting to clean and get it ready for the season, finalizing our staffing. We're looking pretty decent, a lot better than we were last year, so hopefully all goes well with that. We are going to be open to the public June twelfth, just with school and some of the staffing we have. Majority of our staffing is high school kids and then a few teachers. And with the school being later, we want to do some training that first week of June, we'll open to the public on June twelfth. So a little earlier than last year, you know, not as early as we'd like to, but give us a little more time to make sure we get everybody properly trained for the public. That's all been posted on our website, Facebook and at the City of Toma website. It's been posted for the schedules for the pool this summer. Recreation Park finish up, those are events we had in April and May. Once again, thanks to Public Works for assisting and, and sprucing up the horse arena out back. And I know that, and Mr. Hagan was there taping, I saw that wonderful turnout for the high school rodeo. Thanks for everybody helping with that, they're very happy with the results and it's a great community event. Just seeing the kids from junior high and high school out there doing what they love to do. So if you haven't seen it, it's a nice community event and check it out on Hagan Sports Network for that. ICE Center, the ICE is probably into this weekend, this weekend getting removed. So we'll start turning that over for our major events, the Tractor Pull and Fair. And working, continuing to work with the youth hockey group and the junior Wisconsin Woodsman, Woodmenzer. We met with them to try and get things worked out this year as we move along with that project. But we're all working together, hopefully things will work out their first year in town for the junior team. And they'll start doing that end of August, September first, I believe they start practice out there, so that'll be here before we know it, so. With that, other than that, just mowing, grass is growing, so.
Okay.
Trying to get things cleaned up. Just one thing, I like to put a plug out there, every year I do this for the community. We got a great park system, a lot of parks for the community our size, they've been heavily used, especially over by the lake this time of year. But we have seen some vandalism, we have seen some garbage cans lit on fire, you know, things like that. So please do our best, you know, the more time we can spend doing, improving things and projects, the better. But we do a lot of time just, you know, things that shouldn't be, things we shouldn't have to do, you know, picking up after other people. I mean, that's their job, but please put your garbage in the garbage cans, you know, please pick up after your pets. We've been seeing a lot of that in our parks and boulevards, please pick up. We have nine dog stations throughout our trail system that we provide poop bags for the community. Just pick up after your, your pet, please. And then also, if you see anything in the parks that's kind of, you know, shouldn't be happening, you know, call us during our work hours or, you know, the police department. We just want to try to keep everything safe and clean this summer. It's going to be a busy summer, you can see it already, so just want to put that out there.
I have a question.
Sure.
Are we offering Pick-a-Ball this month?
Pick-a-Ball is kind of sporadic at Rec Park at six to eight on Tuesdays and Thursday nights. Just with our major events and stuff like that, but we're looking to get that geared back up.
Till it first or.
Correct it. We do it in Sundays during the fall winter at the high school, but right now we don't, they do their gym floors and stuff and there's people out in the vault, so.
And another comment to the public, got a new restroom coming online here soon. And use the restrooms respectfully, please, because you've got vandalism and all kinds of accidents do happen. But we could use a little more respect in our restroom facilities.
Yeah, the big thing that really got me is the community, you know, in the squirrel's NASA fund rings over two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for that nice playground. We had graffiti on one of our slides, so, but thank goodness we got it off. But it's just little things like that, so if you see somebody, you know, doing that, please just, you know, tell them to knock it off or whatnot, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So as Joe mentioned, crack ceiling is our main focus right now. We have a short window between the weeds starting to come up and cracks, which makes it more difficult for us to do our operations. And we also found out that hopefully we're going to be more first on the list this year for chip ceiling and our micro slurry that we have coming soon. I actually spoke with the contractor on my way in here and they're working on a clean for the micro slurry. It's going to be from Council all the way down to Jackson. And what they're doing right now is, I guess if you were to look at it from a, like a floor leveling, they go in and just kind of put, hit these small areas where there's divots, bigger cracks. Just kind of preparation for that treatment. And that is going to be the first time that we have used that in town for us, so it's kind of a learning experience. And we're going to be monitoring that and how it works in our process. It is, I guess, should provide a little bit smoother finished road, that's one of the goals. But basically talking with the contractor is one of the best avenues that they felt for that scenario there for, for applications. Stay tuned and see how that works. Joe talked about the fence at the rodeo. We will be starting sidewalk repairs in various areas. We've sent the letters out to a number of businesses, primarily on Main Street. They're provided a twenty-day window for them to provide their own contractor repairs. If they don't do that within that window, then we would take over and have our contractor fix those. You'll see a couple on Main Street with cones and we've got them painted to try to alleviate any slips or falls that might happen. It's pretty much for the street department. Sewer department, operations are pretty well normal. We did put, get our U V system online. We did have or find a need for a minor repair to a slide gate and we're working on securing the gate for replacement. We did put in a portable flow meter on Sime Avenue and this is going to be monitoring the flows in that area. Primarily to provide information and data on infiltration into our system. So just another tool that we've bought and we're going to use that and provide data. It's similar to extending the process that we're working on with sump lines to get the sump waters out of the sewers. That's just a continuation of, of another avenue that we're taking, so we don't treat clear water at the treatment plant. Water department, they completed their flushing, I believe they were done last Friday. Had a few bad spots, but every year we're doing the, what we call directional flushing. It's more of a targeted approach than what we used to. We used to kind of just do the same old thing and, and with that, you don't get a scouring of the pipes as well. So we've transitioned to that, we've cut our time for that. I believe it took us six weeks the first time to do it and I think we were at four, four and a half weeks somewhere. So we're getting better at it and getting better results. We did have our annual D N R inspection, we're still waiting that report. We'll probably introduce that to Public Works and have that information to you at the next meeting. And our SCADA system is completed, we overlooked that in the first part there, so that is up and running also. A couple of notes I made. For the lake, our next meeting is this Thursday in this meeting room. It's at five o'clock, we're going to talk about informational signs, doc permits are on there, adaptive management. Those are kind of the normal things that we talk about at that group, not knowing the familiarity for a lot of people, but a lot of information out there. We also, if you've seen, put up some new informational signs at Winnebago and Jones Court. Just kind of sprucing those up there, we're kind of let go for a while. And we also have in those informational pockets and we're going to try to provide information, not only for aquatic hitchhikers, lake-related, you know, possibly NASA boat. Tours, I guess you would say, or rides. And kind of try to keep that changing and, and updating that, fish regulations, things of that nature. So we're starting to get that figured out and what information's going to be in there. And we have one more sign that I believe we're going to intend to put in Bud's Park. We just want to talk about the location and the best place for that to fit, so. Also with the lake committee, we received our dam inspection from two thousand twenty-one that finally got back to us. That is two thousand twenty-one, two years after the fact. Staffing is one of the bigger reasons, I believe, at the D N R. But we were, it's more of a cleanup, we've already taken care of the items that they've wanted us or had on the list back then. But it's just housekeeping to get that tidied up and our inspection is due this year again, so. Becky did mention a generator. Some of you may remember the approval for the generator upgrade at the P E D. The one that was there did not. upgrade at the PED, the one that was there did not come close to managing that facility in an emergency situation, took us over a year to acquire that, it was kind of in the COVID period where supply chain issues created issues, and I think it falls in line with our emergency action plan also for the city, if we were to get that to work out at Ruck Park and with the voting, so we're gonna pursue that, to repurpose that instead of throwing it on the Wisconsin Stripless Auction. See, we have to first, there's some light work, we have to get ahold of the electrical contractor to make sure that'll do what we need to out there, but we're hoping that it will, it's basically just lights and HVAC out there, and hopefully that'll, that'll work. That's all I have, with the monitor normal, but if you have any questions.
I have a question for you, Kurt. Down on Jackson Street in McLean, and if you're going north on McLean, can you cross over Jackson on the right-hand side, there's like a white, I would say maybe three and a half foot, maybe four foot tall box there, I was wondering if that was a charging station?
In that vacant lot, kind of, or that added lot to, just south of the elbow?
Yep.
That's TDS, they call that a node, and it's basically just a central point where a lot of their facilities come into and then they, I guess, you know, kind of make a backbone there and distribute.
That's how they operate.
Yes.
And then, or, do you know by any chance, is there a new high-speed airnet coming in? That's main cable?
That's the same thing, TDS, but there's also another one, well, I wouldn't say another one, an existing one that's gonna upgrade their facilities, and that's Bright Speed, go back in time a little bit, Century Link, Century Tel, that one, so. They are also coming into town, gonna be a little less invasive, about 75% of their communications are overhead or aerial, so that'll help with less, less disruption to our customers out there in the boulevards and sidewalks and things like that, so.
When are they gonna be done? And the reason why I ask is because they tore off a lot of our boulevard, and there's quite a few holes and...
Sure. So, as Nellie mentioned, they're a little lax on their follow-up and repair, Nellie sent us a number of places that were hauls and our staff went out and filled them temporarily, but we did have a discussion with the contractor, and as of last Friday, they were starting those operations out of their normal venue, I guess, so we've tried to make some improvements and nudge them into cleaning up behind themselves.
Some of them are pretty deep and people can fall into them, and I'm kind of concerned about that.
So...
Estimated about a year, isn't it?
Yeah, I just, I just issued probably half the city for permits for them to continue, and it's gonna be ongoing for a long time, I guess. They are responsible for those things, it doesn't, you know, obviously they don't want anybody to get hurt, but they are responsible for those holes and disruptions, so.
I am glad that they're bringing in, I mean, customers have an option, so that's gonna be a good thing, you know, for them to have that option to go someplace else, for internet is a good thing.
Because your emphasis on that in the beginning was to call them, wasn't it?
And it still is.
Thematically was.
It still is, so, just for an example, the information is still on our website, I had one individual call me and wasn't horribly upset, but just wasn't getting anywhere, so I actually went on, called in lieu of him, or for him, advocating for him, so I kind of went through the process, they didn't know who I was, to see if it worked, and they did follow up, followed up with me, and I told him if they didn't follow up with him, to let me know and we'll pursue it more, so. I'm fairly confident that the system's working, but it never hurts to give them that little friendly nudge.
And changing topic, we're gonna be the paper on the trail down at Winnebago Park, do you have any estimated time with, or is that only, are you gonna do it in conjunction with the whole project, or are you gonna try to get that done sooner?
Probably be done sooner, probably be done before the road. I would say after June 5th, roughly, that's really our target to get our crack ceiling done, and I relay that...
Early to June, that's fine, you don't have to get down there in days.
But sometime after that. We did relay, or I did relay to department heads, if we've made commitments to you on certain things, those are, those are stopped, and, you know, this is our emphasis, we're gonna go back to this and you'll have to wait, and it's usually not a problem, so.
Just a comment down back to the lake, I noticed we had an awful lot of, maybe try to waterfall this spring, maybe people will watch him play.
Sure.
Thanks, Kurt.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, the general, please, the department wants to report right now.
Chief Hold is under the weather tonight, so he said if there's any questions, I'm here, here's his report, you can reach out to him about tomorrow or next week.
Sounds good. So the next item is, the general section is approval, allow us change for City Hall?
I make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. The reason why I'm gonna deny it was because I feel that we need to keep City Hall open, we need that public, that public traffic pinning out, we need to be able to keep people coming in into our downtown, and I feel that if we keep City Hall open, that would be a reason, one reason, to get that traffic to continue into the downtown, we encourage the business people to do that, to try to stay open later or longer, and I think we should do the same.
That was to deny the...
No, she said to approve.
To approve. But then the comment was to...
I think it was to bring it up to the table to have a discussion.
If we do a discussion, you, you, both you three, one word together, I'm gonna re-partially with Nellie, but I think maybe, looking at it, maybe we should have some hours at least on Friday if it's to noon.
And they're not willing to, I have discussion with Becky, and that would be something that would not work, is to have City Hall open until the 2:00 clock, and she doesn't feel that would be something that would fit, and...
Yeah, yeah.
So, at first, I just wanted to start off with why the query and considering this, why, because we always thought it this way, and why, why change it now? And there's, there's quite a few reasons, it's not, first off, we would like to expand our office hours in the home time where we're busier, and a lot of times that when we go unlock the doors, there's people standing out there waiting to come in, get their stuff paid or finished or done before they go work in the morning, that tends to be when we see our heaviest traffic, is right away in the morning, as soon as we open the doors, so this would expand our office hours by a half, you know, on every day, on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday, so that's one reason we would want to do that. In order to expand our office hours, we need to have our employees work longer days, in order to have employees work longer days, stay under 40 hours, we need to reduce their hours somewhere else, and that would be Friday. Now, I, I hear the suggestion about the half-day Fridays, and the reason why, one of the other reasons why we're suggesting this particular schedule, which has been adopted by other municipalities, and I put it in the packet there, that there aren't just municipalities that are close to public on Friday, is for a couple reasons. One, it's a way to offer a benefit to our employees that's not a fiscal impact of negative way on the city. We, we talk about wages and all that, we're, we're not going there, we understand that we have limited budgets, and we have to find innovative ways to both serve the public and still take care of our employees, and this was a suggestion, because we talked to every one of our employees that would be affected by this, and every one of them is in support of this, the reason being is because what this motion we're looking for is just to set the hours in City Hall, not to set the hours of our employees, that would be managed by each department, so if some employees can only work nine hours a day and a half day Friday, they can come in and work Friday, and then when we're open to the public, they're serving the public, but on their half-day, they're getting their project worked on. Another reason why we're talking about this is because right now, our hours eight to 4:30 are exactly what our employees do, so the minute that the doors open is the minute that our employees start their, their day, they have no time at the start of their shift to prepare for the day, to get things done, to finish up what they were working on yesterday, and at the end of the day, when we shut the doors, and there are departments that need to have work that gets done after the public gets done, I could maybe let a treasurer talk to that one day, if you don't mind.
So, yeah, with this, each department has different needs or desires or anticipated outcomes that they want, in my department, it was really a push for a cushion at the end, preferably at the end of the day, but either at the beginning of the day or the end of the day, so that at the end of the day, we tie out a lot of reports, we're tying out our tax reports, we're tying out our pet licenses, and right now, we're doing that while we're open to the public, and so it never fails that at 4:25, we've got everything tied out, and then someone comes in and wants to buy two licenses and pay their taxes, which they are totally entitled to do, because we're open, but then that means that we've got to work beyond the scheduled hours, which amounts to overtime or, you know, just...
Two questions.
Yeah.
If somebody comes in at 4:25 and you wanna do that, and you service them, right?
Yes, yeah.
Why can't that work, wait until the next day to file or...
It can, but again, right away at eight o'clock when we start our day, we're also open to the public, so we're serving the public right away again.
Next question.
Yeah.
How many employees do you have on the, just one?
We have three in our department, we will only have two for the summer.
I think that's a good point that you just brought up, Nellie, I think all of the departments in City Hall, Treasurers, Clerk's Office, and the Public Works Office, all have multiple employees that are doing clerical work, there should be a way to stagger, stagger the hours between those employees to cover, one's starting an hour, half an hour early, one's shipped any half an hour late.
I, I really believe that there is ways to do this, without having to close on Friday.
Will we, go ahead, a second.
Couple of things, Becky mentioned employees being off, normally if they want a day off, they're not scheduled on Friday, they take a vacation day to take that day off. My question would be, if that person is accumulating every Friday, how would they work their vacation at the end of the year, if they have a month, if they have a lot of hours that they need to use by the end of the year, and they won't be able to do that because they have that one Friday that they're using and not using vacation, that's my first question, do you want to answer that?
Sure, so first off, if an employee is gonna use vacation to cover a day where they work a 10-hour day, they have to use 10 hours of vacation to cover that day, not eight, you know, they, they will still accumulate the same amount of vacation that they did before, because they're still working 40 hours a week, it's just not in five days, it's in four, so, to answer your question, it allows them to take their vacation on other days, I mean, they would, they'll still use it.
Well, just like me, I have all those days at the end of the year because I'm not using them, and then I'm off for a whole month, because I need to use it.
I can tell you that the employees that we have that are affected by this, that I know of, are, don't fall into the category where they have so much vacation that they're not able to use it all, all year, in fact, it just makes it easier for management to handle the vacation scheduling, because you don't have everyone wanting to take every Friday off during the summer because they have off, so it makes scheduling for our management team much easier, especially during the summer months, so that's just kind of one more bonus that we had talked about.
That's true, it's a benefit to having employees with very small multi-tenure compared to what we used to have, and we had 20 years of seniority on a lot of our employees, they were getting four or five weeks of vacation a year, that'd take a day after week to use it.
I have a question, I'm sorry, Mike, are you sure? Do you have any employees that are interested in an eight-hour workday?
We do have at least one that I know of, that's interested in an eight-hour workday, however, one thing that I think is important to point out is that while we have different types of administrative workers here in City Hall, our jobs are not the same, and they are trained and have different education and experience and training that allows them to do the jobs that they're doing, for instance, someone from Public Works is not able to process a license, it's, it's, they're two separate departments and they aren't, they aren't exchangeable employees, and so when you talk about exchangeable, at my department, I have myself, I have one full-time employee and one 20-dollar a week employee, that's it, so, we talked about staggering, when one of us has off, the other one has to be there. Neither one of us will ever both have a Friday off unless we have our part-time person work additional hours, so then you're adding time, so, it, that, again, it's just one more scheduling, and that, that's just my department, every department is different, but I can tell you the idea of shared responsibilities and one person or two people who decide to work at eight to five on that Friday, if that's what you're suggesting, it's not feasible at this time based on the training and education and work, you know, job descriptions of our employees are not the same.
I need to, Sean, to comment, our employees, as Richard said, typically a long tenure, so if you're gonna have employees early in their career, maybe when you're having kids or, you know, daycare, that want that eight hours, but then throughout their career, they're gonna more likely gravitate to four tens or, you know, and that's kind of where we're looking to get those options for those employees in their various, you know, times in their career.
Well, the reason I asked that was, is I was just wondering if there was a person, if they were interested in an eight-hour work shift, if that would be a possibility for that person to work on a Friday and then do alternating Fridays with days off, so then that way, there's always somebody in the office for, to take questions or, or to at least be of, of service to the public.
Yeah, I, I think we would still have limited scheduling opportunities for Fridays, but in general, we're not really talking about changing the employees' hours dramatically, it's, we're really trying to focus on what we can do for the public and still, you know, help our employees with recruitment and retention.
I think part of what we have to take into consideration is residual, you know, we talk about fiscal impact, and residual fiscal impact has to be brought to the table. Residual fiscal impact is the fact that Nicole and I work together, I think she can attest to the fact that when I'm trying to get things done in the day, and how many times do somebody, does somebody walk back, somebody's here to talk to you, somebody's here to talk to you, somebody's here to talk to you, and I have to stop everything I'm doing to go up and deal with this, and go up and deal with that, and go up and deal with this, and I think she can acknowledge the fact that on the days when I don't have anybody in there, I am a lot... I am a lot more efficient and I get a lot more done when nobody is bothering me. I'm gonna tell you, the best day of work I have is Sunday morning. I get in usually around seven thirty. And I have a cook that comes into the kitchen at nine thirty, but they're doing their stuff. And I really don't deal with anybody till ten or ten thirty. I get so much done in that timeframe versus what I get done in the afternoons of continually being interrupted. Now, when we talk about residual fiscal impact, yes, we're talking about the people that might wanna take days off. Great, so we're gonna have somebody there to cover it. But that person's gonna be there to answer this question, fill out this form, uh, you know, take a rental for this. And what really are they accomplishing on that Friday when all they're doing is continually getting up from their desk and going to the window? Now, I went to the DMV several times in the last couple of months. The last time I was there, there was not one single person at a window. And there were six people in the DMV standing there waiting for somebody to come to them. And there were five people standing in line that they had to talk to one person before they got dispersed out. Why? Because it's a level of efficiency that they've deemed that works best for them so that they aren't taking and adding extra work where work doesn't have to happen. What they've done for us as a public is they've trained us. If you're going to do this, you're gonna come in, you're gonna walk into this line, okay? It, within the city, when we, you know, we look at what might come through the doors on a Friday, what is the trade-out? The trade-out is, is we continually hear about short staffing in, in these different departments. If all of a sudden, we're a little short-staffed on a Friday, we're no longer short-staffed because they're in there not being interrupted, getting their stuff done. That is a residual fiscal impact to the city of Toma in the fact that productivity increases on twenty percent of the week because we don't have those constant interruptions. That is a huge benefit to the city as well as a huge benefit to the staff.
Well, I'm gonna make a comment. I have talked to a couple of people, including business people, that don't feel that City Hall should be closed. Me in particular, I don't think that that is a good way of serving our constituents and the people that live in the city. Um, I'm off on Monday. I cannot get to, to see Becky on Friday because I work and I have to be there. Well, because my coworker is off on that day, so I've got to be there. So when I am off, I come to City Hall, do what I have to do, pay my taxes because that is the time I have. But in my job, there, and we serve the public all the time, and that's my concern about serving the public. Because as an elected official, that's kind of what I am elected to do. And so for half City Hall closed, I get it. You want that downtime to be able to work. But if you're off all day and you're not there, what work are you gonna get done?
It isn't, it isn't about being off all day. It's about the fact that if she has to be gone or if her assistant has to be gone, she can now no longer get her work done because she is continually having to cover for somebody else. When you say you're off on Mondays, there's a reason you're off on Mondays. There's a reason we're closed on Mondays. It's the fiscal impact. It is the residual effect of us being closed on Mondays. I could be open on Mondays. Right now, staffing is a huge issue. But what it does for me is it allows me to give a one fell swoop day off to every employee. And so what that does is that thou, you know, when you're looking to give, you know, everybody two days off a week, I have now reeled in one day. Now, for me to go back to Mondays, I'm gonna have to increase my staff, which is gonna increase my payroll, which Mondays are generally not a real great day in the restaurant industry. So what I look at is I say, okay, I can go back to breaking even on a Monday, but then adding more strain and stress to my, my already stressed staff. But from a fiscal impact, it is better for me to just be closed one of those days and step away from the business. And, and again, you're just gonna educate people. Monday through Thursday is when things are taken care of. This isn't a new concept. There's multiple cities that are doing it, and that's exactly why they're doing it.
And I see the multiple, but that doesn't say that there could be a budget issue where they, they don't have enough money to keep enough staff until they close. But that's mine, that the hours here, but I don't know what those hours consist of. All I'm saying is for me and for the people I talk to and the business person, they wanna be able to have that, um, that traffic coming in and out. They say it's convenient for them to have it. They wanted to see public, you know, City Hall open. I'm gonna have to go with that. Everybody here makes their own decisions, but mine does, does not.
I have one, my turn, I guess.
I wanna comment.
So for, um, I'm familiar with the ten-hour work schedule. By far, the most four-day-a-week, ten-hour schedule is probably a real appealing thing if you wanna retain people in lieu of paying higher than a lot of other, you know, jobs and everything. So it's a huge benefit. Um, it is very effective if you can, especially if you're open earlier in the morning because some people can, you know, hit the time before work when they wanna work. I get that. Um, I also can greatly appreciate when you're not open to the public. Um, it makes sense. If you can eliminate overtime, and I wanna thank all the department heads for coming up with a plan to possibly save money on the overtime because like, we're trusting you to run your departments. So I don't wanna micromanage any department. I appreciate you guys just trying to come up with ways to move forward and, you know, in a positive way. I also appreciate trying to be open for the public. But as long as you can still drop off your bills downtown, you could maybe pull a permit or something for something. But if you get paid on Fridays and you wanna pay your water bill on a Friday because you waited to last minute, been there, done that. So, I mean, you can do it, but now we've also increased our opportunities with things online, you know, you can auto, auto pay. You can um, pay online, you know, some of the things you might wanna do at the counter. Like, if you wanna use a credit card at the counter, you know, it costs you. So as we're getting more modern in our ability to do some more things online, I don't know, I would be, I would be for um, doing the four-day work week. Now, just give it a try. You can always go back if it seems like it doesn't work out. And I have no problem telling any constituents that talk to me that we're trying to figure out ways to be innovative and save some money and not have to work overtime and be more efficient. You know, that's, should be a good thing, I think, you know.
Yeah, we, one of the benefits of this, we were talking about, or, or one of the problems with our employees is that they're, they're running to the end of the, they start the minute they, the office is open, the minute they come in, and they run right to the end. And this doesn't change that at all. We're still, we're still, the four days were open, we're open at seven thirty and.
But it would allow employees to work a ten-hour shift and then have to either not work Friday or reduce their hours on Friday.
Okay, four tens are in conjunction with this, not just the extra half hour.
It wouldn't have to be, but it gives the department the flexibility to staff appropriately based on our needs, which right now, we cannot do.
So what would the employees' hours be then if we went to the seven thirty to four thirty?
It would depend on the employee. Um, but it would give us the opportunity to add an hour to that employee's day, to give them a half an hour before and a half an hour after, and then reduce their schedule on Friday. Whether they get ten hours in Monday through Thursday and don't have to come in Friday, or whether they're nine and a half, wherever that falls. But it gives the departments the flexibility to staff appropriately, which we don't have that flexibility now because if someone's working nine and a half or eight and a half hours, we don't have anywhere to knock that off in the rest of the week because we are open that entire forty hours of the week.
Are we talking all the departments? Every single one besides City Hall or just City Hall?
This is City Hall hours. We're looking to set City Hall's hours of operation.
What are the public hours proposed?
Right now?
Yeah, right now.
What, what's the proposed?
Eight to four thirty. So the proposed public hours are seven thirty to four thirty. So if someone worked in, theoretically, if some one of our employees worked a ten-hour day, they would work from seven to five. That would give them a half an hour before the public was here to get ready for their day and a half an hour at the end of the shift to finish up their day, finish up their project or whatever they're doing uninterrupted before they leave for the day. And then come back to a fresh start, again, half an hour to get through their emails, get through any project work that's been assigned to them. And, and they have a half an hour to go in before we open the doors. So they would actually have an extra hour each day where we're not open yet, but they're here. That's the plan for the ten-hour employees. Seven to five.
Yeah, seven noon is five and then noon to five is another five, so it's ten hours.
Yeah, but you don't get paid for lunchtime.
They would do two, like fifteen-minute breaks instead of a lunch. Two people.
Okay, so we're, we're looking at a real major change, okay? And flexibility, you can work within that ten. You can do nine and you can have only part of Friday off. We're gonna go to a whole flex system on the extra eight, on the extra eight hours.
Right. Our responsibility would be to make sure that we cover whatever is deemed City Hall hours. Each department may be different based on their needs, and that allows us the flexibility. It allows us to, to work with our employees too and offer a perceived benefit that doesn't cost us anything as a city. And so I think that, um, yes, that's, that's the key is to establish the open hours for City Hall and then let each department determine how we're gonna schedule our people to get their forty hours back.
Let me ask you this. Why, why are all the other departments not able to work that schedule with their employees if they choose to manage their, their departments?
It's a good question. I think where we're start, we're starting here. We gotta start somewhere. Uh, we talked a little bit, uh, you know, we talked to Kurt a little bit, said, well, would you ever think about moving all your street people to four, four days a week? And in order for him to do that, he would have to reconfigure our entire garbage pickup schedule and a bunch of things that would need to go into that. It's not totally off the table. But we'd just like to try it, and this is a localized, small enough population of people to give it a try that isn't gonna affect everybody in the City Hall that we would have, yeah.
There are departments within the city who work four tens already.
No, that's new to us.
But, but it's been, it's been going on. The thing is, is just because.
I didn't know that. I mean, I don't.
But, but, but why do we need to know that? Why do we need to know that?
We don't.
There's a, but there's a difference in every department.
Yeah.
You know, again, I'm gonna use the restaurant.
Right.
In the morning, I need cooks there earlier than I need servers there. Every, every department has a different necessitation for what it is that makes them exist and, and maintain. So there are other departments.
That's fine. I just didn't know that was actually, that they're doing that. That's my, that's my thing.
Richard?
Well, when you talk about so many other departments, uh, go back to the McCounty Highway Department. They're on a four-day work with thirty-seven months because it's more efficient for the work crews to be out and work a ten-hour shift than to try it back and forth every five days is, they say, a fourth of their, a fifth of their travel time.
I, like I said before, I don't personally have a problem with trusting each department to make sure their work is all getting done. You know, just to, you know, just to give it a shot and see if it works.
Well, I know we have a motion on the, on the floor at this time, but just that is, my comment is, I'd like a little more time. This is a real new concept to all of us. Um, it hasn't been out to, to the public to see, get any input. Um, I don't, this is a pretty major move by this body, and I'd like to have, give us a little time to digest it.
I totally understand and respect that. I think the, the reason why we brought it up when we did now is because time, the summertime months in particular are more difficult for staffing purposes. Consider, um, it'll take a long weekend during the summer. It's very common and it's expected. If you were in the vacation, you'd be able to use it. However, this would, this would really pave the way for the departments of East of City Hall who are affected by this to be able to more effectively handle the vacation scheduling during the summer months. That's why we brought it up, you know, starting.
I under, I understand that would only be thirty more days. I'm not saying post-monic, though, the first of the year. Not that any, not that I mean, I'm gonna think any different law or anything's gonna change, but it's just, um, seems to me an awful major policy to just put through in one second.
We still need to vote on the issue that's on the board.
What's the motion?
To approve.
Okay.
So there's a motion to.
Approve.
Yes.
So.
It's been seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Richard?
I wanna make a comment here. We've got three aldermen that are missing here tonight that haven't taken part in this discussion. And I would move that we table it and go tomorrow night.
Well, you still have to vote on what's on the floor.
Yeah, because it's just, it's just a move with a recommendation to the council to mount that. Okay, fine.
So that means.
We still have a vote.
A motion to table, as president, so we'll have a motion on the floor.
So, yeah, we have a motion on the table to.
To approve?
Well, it's just to pass it down to the council.
Yeah, so we can still talk about tomorrow?
No, my motion was denied.
So you said a motion was denied. You said a motion to approve, and then when you talked, you voted to deny. So we opened it up to discuss it, but I guess all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
No.
So we have a count of how many nos? One, two, three, four nos? And how many days? One, two, three days. So does that mean it comes up tomorrow or not?
Yeah.
Okay, it comes up tomorrow.
Just a good recommendation from this body and then obviously make a motion, just move it to the next one.
So, good. Then how about, the next item?
Good, good conversation.
Yeah, it was good. Next item is approval of the building rental contract on one thousand Superior Avenue. We should approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
They did, uh, and I'm gonna put this to the council members. They did reach out and ask me if they felt like they needed to be here tomorrow night. Is there any council member that looked this over and saw there was any questions that they would have of potential tenant that would require them to be here tomorrow night?
I don't think so.
No, I, I didn't think so, but I just wanted to make sure with you guys that there was nothing you saw. Okay, I'll let them know. Thank you.
John? Um, just, I'm sorry, I didn't look at this prior to the meeting. I did find a couple of errors in there. Uh, one is under the repairs item. It says including hearing and air conditioning. I would assume that should be meeting. Couple, um, and then there's one in, uh, the insurance. It says premises and, and personality owned by lessor. It should be a personal item. So if it's all right, just for transparency, I'll get Penny to fix that up prior to tomorrow night.
Shane, I believe your microphone is on.
So do we, uh, do we have to vote to approve it then tomorrow? We have, we can do that?
With those changes.
Changing changes, right. They won't, uh, the money, we're. Sounds good.
Neil.
So a motion and a second. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carried. And then, uh, third one, amendment, amendment of ordinance section fifty-two dash ten for regarding open decks, first reading, second reading.
Make a motion to, second.
So we have a motion and a second by Zabinski. Any further discussion?
Yeah, that's this drawing we have in front of us, right?
Yeah, so this proposed amendment, section fifty-two dash one A four is to essentially allow unenclosed decks to encroach the side and rear yard setbacks by half the required distance. This will help accommodate improvements to homes built on smaller lots in older established neighborhoods that'll probably affect probably eight to fifteen projects a year.
So that means if there's a standard ten-foot setback, you can, you can put your deck out there to five feet.
Correct.
Twenty-five foot, you can go to twelve and a half.
Well, the side yard's always gonna be ten feet, so all the side yard setbacks will end up for unenclosed decks being five feet. Uh, when we're talking about the rear yard setback, that's based upon the percent of the lot depth, twenty percent. So if you had a hundred-foot deep lot, your rear yard setback. So if you had a hundred-foot deep lot, your rear yard setback for that project would have been twenty feet prior. After this, it'll only be ten feet.
And in front, if you have twenty-five, you can go to twelve and a half?
Nope, this is just for, for the, well, the required front, um, is gonna be established by your neighbors', um, front property lines. A lot of those properties are already too close to that front property line, so we already use the average setback to those, and that would still apply.
Okay, so this is sides and rears.
Correct.
Well, sides for the half, and the rear has some other parameter.
Half of the percent of the lot depth, correct.
Okay.
So in other words, someone with a real lot, deep lots, they could have their decks, or their, um, decked in as far as, uh, much as thirty-five or forty feet?
In the rear yard, but you're still gonna be subject to your complete, uh, percent of lot coverage at your locker structures. There's other, uh, parameters that would still apply to that, Richard. So effectively, someone could cover their entire yard in a, in a deck either way.
Because other structures and everything can be involved in this, to, to how much your total lot can be covered, right, with building?
Correct.
So there's all, so there's several different things when you start to look at covering a great portion of your lot.
Yes, a lot of these existing fifty-foot lots have homes on, either have side entrances, and people like to be able to build a small deck and wrap that around and connect that to a rear deck. We get quite a few of them like that, and this would allow for those decks to be constructed.
Otherwise, we're not allowing them to improve their property at all, we're just making them stay the same, getting no improvements on some of these smaller lot, older properties.
Correct.
Sound like a good idea.
So we need a motion to, with that? Chair, are you looking for adoption?
That's tomorrow, there.
Oh, that's tomorrow.
That would be tomorrow.
Yeah, just need a recommendation today.
Yeah.
To the council, tomorrow, I'll ask her.
Move forward to the council for all three.
For all three?
All second.
And, uh, Sean, thank you.
There's a motion there?
For that? And then Sean. Thank you, Dave. Ordinance creating article...
Gonna vote?
Oh, we have to vote, all those. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, but the real vote's tomorrow, okay. So ordinance creating article, um, seven, chapter twelve of the City of Toma Municipal Code, Mobile Food Establishments, first reading, second reading, and adoption.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion?
And I have a question. Um, at one time, it was brought up, were we going to limit the number of food trucks? Uh, I know that was a discussion at one time, that we were gonna have a, I thought that we were going to limit the number. And I thought that was just not at the downtown Thursday night, but in town as, in general.
So that particular issue is not addressed in this ordinance. I mean, we could create a ordinance for that if we, if you were so choose, we can definitely look into that. But this is for the licensing and management of the current food trucks. It doesn't have any limit, any kind of limit in this one. I don't know if that's something that, it might have been prior to my time when you guys talked about that, and...
Am I way off or?
No.
I just...
It's just we can't, it's just not part of this. It's a, it's a different discussion.
Okay.
Different topic, same, same...
I just think that we should...
Same concept, different topic.
Okay, I just think that we should bring it up at some point.
Good.
How busy can we talk?
Same stuff.
Say, yeah, but, yeah.
So do we, I know that we have an ordinance, so do we not with this? We don't have a food truck ordinance at all right now. So that's what this is doing, establishing one.
This is what it is right now.
This is what we're hoping it to be, yes.
Okay, and there's a fee?
So I can go over the process a little bit if you can. Yeah. Right now?
Sure.
So right now, the process is, is that anybody who wants to sell something in the City of Toma, whether it be selling peaches on the corner, or corn, sweet corn somewhere, or wants to sell prop, you know, cooked food from a food truck, is all getting the same license right now. They're all getting the transient merchant license.
That's outside of the farmer's market.
That is outside of the farmer's market, correct. So if they wanted to do that and sell at the farmer's market, they would have to give both licenses, a farmer's market and a transient merchant, so that, farmer's market allows you to sell right there in the establishment area for the farmer's market. Transient merchant allows you to sell everywhere else that's allowed in the city, which is private property by permission only, otherwise on, on public property. Most of the time it's by invite, you know, or the sites that were, the places where they're allowed to be. So the process right now is that the food trucks are filling out the same exact, the same exact application for, for their license. And they're only paying, I think, twenty-five dollars right now for that license. The, the thing about it is that a food truck is got a lot of state-required items that they need to have. They need to have, um, it's, you know, I think they need a seller's permit that needs to be established with the Department of Revenue. They have to have a food safety course to be able to do it. They have to have so many, uh, hand washing stations available. All these inspections are stuff that are, are things that the, the state monitors, and, and it's not something that we necessarily would have to know about and do. However, food trucks are, can be dangerous. They are, a lot of times have fire inside of them. And if you guys remember back in twenty nineteen, we had a fire downtown.
July eleventh?
July eleventh, twenty nineteen, because that food truck did not have an inspection on it by the fire department to ensure that it had proper fire suppression in place in case there was a fire. Um, so what this does is just creates a little bit more regulation on just food trucks in particular, so it has their own ordinance and completely separate from the guy that sells, or lady that sells peaches on the corner, because this is, got a lot more moving pieces and parts and requirements by the state. So the process would, it will be that they'll have a different application process. There will be, uh, an actual inspection required by the fire department prior to getting the license to ensure that it's safe to have in our city. And the license does cost more, it'll be a hundred and twenty-five dollars annually. Um, and the license period will be one year, January to December for, for everybody. We'll prorate it, if you get one in July, it would be cheaper than if you got one in January. So we prorate that. Uh, and then one of the questions is, what do we do about all the ones that have a license now from the old way? And so the proposal to, to handle that, how we are going to handle that if this passes, is to contact each one, because we know which ones are food trucks and which ones are not. Uh, with the proper application, have them filled out, we'll go through the process with them, make sure that they're safe, and that we can give them, and issue them a food truck license. We would not charge them, the ones who already have a license. They would be kinda grandfathered in from having to pay any kind of fees this year. But starting January first, everything would be new and in effect. That's how we would handle the current ones, so that we, we don't have any floating out there that aren't following procedures. We also will require copies of their documentation from the state to make sure that they're actually doing it. They're supposed to be doing it with the state, uh, when, when they, when they turn their license.
I believe they're required to have a license from the Department of Health also.
Yes, I think you're right. Yeah, and so we will require copies of that, with their, a license for processing.
Now, does Rooster Andy fall under that category or not?
Yes, I would believe so.
Because he doesn't operate out of a truck per se, if he sets up a barbecue stand and barbecues...
I think it's, he's still a transient food merchant, so that would count. That's why we call it a mobile food establishment, it doesn't have to be a truck. Establishment of some, your business that moves around that sells prepared food.
Will that truck be inspected by the fire department also?
Yes, all of the current ones will.
And that will test their fee for that hundred and twenty-five dollars to cover any fee for the fire department if there is one? I'm not sure.
There's, I'm just saying. Right, the fire department doesn't charge us to do those, uh, you're not gonna charge me, are you?
They probably shouldn't be because...
Yeah.
A portion of that fee probably shouldn't go to the fire department because that's, whoever's doing the inspection is getting paid a salary.
Right, and that's all general fund revenues, so it does go back into the general fund, which the fire department is part of, just like...
So long as they get something for doing the inspection on their part, you know, help their budget.
The revenues go into the pot with all their departments too, yes.
Okay.
I have a question. Um, did I cut you off?
No.
I, I'm sorry. How did you come up with a hundred and twenty-five dollars?
So, that's a good question, actually. So we didn't want to just randomly pick an amount. Uh, so what we did was kind of poll a lot of other municipalities who already have these types of, uh, ordinances in place for food trucks. And we kind of took, uh, an average and, and then looked at the populations of each city. So for instance, in like New York City, I think a food truck license is like something like three thousand dollars, because they're much larger, they have much bigger population, you know, I mean, it makes sense, and, and they probably have a limit on how many can, you know, you can have one, I'm guessing, in certain areas. I, I don't know all of this, I'm just speculating. So theirs are quite expensive. Um, where the, the city of Toma is probably closer, somewhere in between, you know, Sparta, lacrosse. And we, we looked at similar-sized, uh, cities to get, come up with a, a good amount. That wasn't over the top expensive for people, but it certainly requires a lot more work on, on behalf of the city, including our fire department who's gotta go out there and inspect it. So in, in, it really makes sense to bring in a revenue that at least helps pay for itself. It may not be making lots of money on the deal, but it, it gets more appropriate, and so...
The reason why I'm asking is, is my line of thinking, I think the hundred and twenty-five dollar is very low and generous. I think it should be upped, and I think it should go up to at least one fifty, at least.
To, to cover the charge?
Yeah.
Fire department, whatever the needs that they need.
That was the reason why I was asking.
Yeah, I think we just took an average, is what we did. I mean, you certainly, as a body, can set the fee however you would like it to be, uh, you know, we'll work with that. I thought, I think the big thing is, is that it's gonna be an initial shock for some of these vendors who are used to paying twenty-five dollars, and I don't want to discourage people from, from being their, you know, bringing their business to the city and getting, you know, gatherings. I don't know, I just, I don't wanna thwart anybody, but I'd wanna make it fair, so that's why I think, I just...
I think it's low. I, I think we should, I think it should be raised.
What were the highs?
Shoot, I, you tested, I didn't write it all on...
Can you bring that tomorrow night?
I can, yes.
Look at, give us the range?
I can give you the ranges of what they have in the cities.
I, I just have a concern with food trucks, period, because our brick and mortar people struggle a lot. And to have us being just low, and first of all, we had, you could just almost come and do it, well, the twenty-five dollars, and set them up, fortunately, we didn't have a big influx of them, but we're getting more activities around town where they're getting more popular, and I just don't wanna see a whole bunch of food trucks coming when restaurants who are paying way more are struggling. I realize diversity and everything helps everyone in the long run, but I want them to pay their fair share. And we're talking about your office doing, are we doing background checks?
Yes.
Okay, so we got background checks, we got fire department. So, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking that if, I'd like to see that fee structure, and we might wanna go more...
Sure, I can bring that tomorrow.
High end to cover and make it, do you?
Just, just for point of reference, uh, when you say those numbers, I'm trying to make off the top of my head what we just paid just for having pool tables and... I'm using, it's nine, it's over nine hundred dollars.
Come on?
Over nine hundred.
Liquor licenses themselves are like six...
Six, sixty.
Fifty, sixty, something like that. But still, they're five.
Would that like to have the give, like, Shane?
Yeah, with every, with everything just for our existence.
Yeah, and that, we did think about some things about our current, um, business owners who may decide to add a food truck to their businesses.
Which I, very, yeah.
And, and I, I hadn't even talked to him about it, actually, so it's actually kind of good that you mentioned it. But if for any business who decides they wanna start making themselves a little more mobile, but they have a brick and mortar that, that they go back to, there's a caveat in, in there, in the...
That they don't, they give...
They get one without having to pay the fee. They still gotta go through the process to get inspected and all of that, which is fair, but they won't be charged because that's, they're already, that's in the actual ordinance authority. We did think about that.
Just, uh, you said, uh, farmer's market, market, say twenty-five, correct?
Yep.
Yeah, just for like anybody's gonna have food inspection books.
Yeah, and so that twenty-five versus what the food trucks were paying?
Was basically what they were paying to, I think it's twenty-five or, or, I think it was twenty-five, but maybe thirty-five, but it's not... Yeah, so maybe, bring the scale, like... I sure am, I have a problem with that.
Just to see that range. So we have a motion and a second to request to waive the first and second reading and adoption of new food truck ordinance. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, uh, motion carried.
I have a question. Where do security services tie into that?
I'm happy about you, and I don't know if it's on... I just mean, neither.
Because that's outside the brick and mortar itself.
Right, it's, um...
But it's an extension of the business.
It's a delivery service?
It's like a plumber going to a site, it's no different.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't charge a plumber extra because he goes to a person's house to work on stuff.
I'll look at it.
A caterer's gonna go to a location to bring food.
Yeah, I think it's, if they're not actually preparing the food there on a different site, they're just delivering it at that point.
Just curious.
I'm gonna look it up. So that we, since we just waived the first and the second reading and adopted it, can we go back?
That'll be, that'll be tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
It's just, it's recommended, it's just recommended to move it tomorrow.
I'll need to change the price tomorrow.
Then we'll, then we can visit.
That's okay, that's what I was wondering.
Next item, number thirteen, we have a resolution authorizing the payment of the law we built.
Motion approved.
Second.
Yeah, the motion approved, and a second. All those in favor, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item number fourteen, temporary class B license application by the Toneri Community Theater to sell wine at its brick sip house pre-show wine tasting event, I mean, nineteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion approved.
Second.
The motion approved, I don't know, second, finally. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, any opposed, motion carried. And item number fifteen, temporary class B, a temporary class B license application by the Toma Lions Club to sell fermented malt beverages and wine at the North American Squirrel Associations, Squirrel Fest on July eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Move to approve. Second.
Move to approve and second, I know. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item sixteen is a request from Kelsey's Class Acquire and Smoke Cell Room for special amendments to the premises description of their class B fermented malt beverage licenses and class B liquor licenses for special events on June tenth, two thousand twenty-three, and August twelfth, two thousand twenty.
Move to approve. Second.
Second.
The other one moved to approve, I don't know, second by Sean. Any further discussion?
Oh, it was by Richard.
Oh, Richard, sorry.
The other woman.
The other one.
Thomas, Richard, Richard's got shorter hair.
They're like twins, anyway.
It was one time you never said one?
Yeah. All those, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item seventeen, approved after permission. Item seventeen, approved out of permission of full-time employee for forty hours a week to thirty-two hours a week or more.
Question.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to move it to, to next month. Right away, we have our, just have some discussion on this evening. I'm not prepared, this is another, this falls right under the same, for me.
And I would second that.
So, what's your motion?
To have a motion to move it to next month.
Yeah.
To bring back next month, a small...
Give us some time to digest.
So, what questions? What questions would we like them to answer for us?
I have one specifically. Why is he the financial impact? Is it probably eligible for insurance at thirty-two versus forty?
Um, so, it's not when they're eligible for employee, uh, insurance, um, it's what our, um, our threshold is for our contribution. So, right now, as it sits, anybody above, um, twelve-hundred hours a year, uh, gets paid fifty percent of their health insurance. And then that goes, the next jump then is forty hours a week where it's eighty-eight percent.
So, in other words, what you're saying is presently it's less than, less than thirty-two hours per week is classified as a full-time employee for insurance purposes?
With a lesser degree of contribution toward their health insurance. So, per hour handbook, an employee must work forty hours per week to be considered full-time. The separate issue is the contribution to their health insurance. Anyone working less than forty hours, therefore only, will only get the fifty percent contribution toward their health insurance. They are not considered, per our handbook, to be full-time.
So, this would make them eligible for a hundred percent insurance at thirty-two hours?
Well, currently, we just don't schedule anyone thirty-two hours. We either have them as a part-time employee at twenty hours, uh, because again, WRS kicks in, anyone over twelve-hundred. So typically, it's either we're keeping them under that WRS threshold, or we're having them work forty hours per week.
I can, if I could just add to it just a little bit, um, so, the IRS and the Affordable Care Act actually define anyone working thirty-plus hours a week as full-time. That's very, very common in most employers to have a threshold that's not forty to be considered a full-time employee and be entitled to full-time employee benefits. The only reason why we're asking for this isn't, this really isn't going to change much of anything in the city. It just allows us the flexibility. So, let's say we have a forty-hour employee leave in a department and we need to replace them. This would allow us to post a thirty-two-hour-per-week job, full-time, with benefits, that would essentially be, how much off of...
Uh, with the average wage of a starting employee, it would be around eighty-five-hundred dollars per employee for those four hours of saving.
Eight hours.
Uh, sorry, the, four hours of saving, yeah, yeah, eight hours. But she said the four hours, so that would be forty-two-hundred dollars per employee if, if we hired them as a thirty-six-hour employee.
And, and what it, what it does for the city is it takes, again, the vantage point has to be from, the vantage point has to be from that of, we're not just going to go out automatically and tell everybody, oh, no, you're only working thirty-two hours, you know? The vantage, the vantage point is the fact that if we have a department that looks at it and says, man, we just don't have a lot of stuff to get done this week, we can save eight hours of pay for that person. So, the city is actually saving money by sending somebody home early because, and, you know, for some people, they may go, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll be loose, I can leave and, you know, not come in on Friday. You know, I'm okay with that. So, rather than that person being here for eight hours and accomplishing something and, you know, but perhaps not a full load, uh, it, it allows levels of pliability for the supervisors.
So, just to be clear in my mind, and maybe some of the council members, if that person, and you may correct me if I'm wrong, it's the way I'm looking at it, if that person is hired as forty dollars and we do not have anything to do on that Friday, we can ask, we can give them a choice to say thirty-two hours, but you're only going to get paid, you're not going to get paid for that eight hours you're not there. Okay.
You're going to get paid for thirty-two, but they're not going to lose, they're not going to go, oh, man, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get health insurance.
Right, which is, that's the flexibility of it. That I can kind of digest.
It doesn't, it doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that from a departmental standpoint, again, it's going to be one broad brush stroke of, oh, we're just going to start cutting people to thirty-two hours.
Right.
What it does, it is allows, again, a level of pliability for each supervisor to maybe when the budgets are getting tight or when, you know, things of that nature, you know, or am I understanding that incorrectly?
I just don't understand it.
Yeah.
My under, is it, is this the correct understanding, that it could be applied week by week by week? I thought it was just more for a long term. Somebody wants to only work, they have childcare or something in their life and they can, don't have it on Friday afternoon or something, so they need four hours of office hours or that, or that whole day.
It would provide a department the opportunity to use it in...
But you could do it on a week by week.
Of course.
You just say, you don't have to work, and ask.
Yes, every employee has to have forty hour, on their paycheck, eighty hours of payable time, whether they use vacation sick, however that may be. This just offers up a cost savings to say, yeah, we're not busy, um, if anyone wants to go unpaid, you're free to do that.
But, but also, you know, from another standpoint, you just triggered something with that, from a maternity or paternity standpoint, you know, somebody comes back from maternity leave or paternity leave and goes, wow, I've jumped right back into forty hours, is, you could actually jump them into thirty-two hours, they're not losing their benefits. It's benefiting the city, but it's also benefiting them, you know, again, case by case.
I just want to be clear, if that person, employee is off, they don't expect to get paid that for eight hours if they're not there. That's the only thing that I want to make sure the employee knows, hey, if you want that Friday off, you're not going to get paid for it, but you can keep your, your benefits will still continue.
And that's exactly what we want to be a flexibility.
That I can, I can digest.
Also, the labor laws that we're under, are we on, under anything over eight, anything over forty, or just anything over forty? Because if anything over eight also applies, I don't like the fact that we'd be paying any overtime if someone doesn't make forty, if we're on anything over. Say, we have an office, this is office personnel does this, then they come to a night meeting, so they only work thirty-two, they get a two-hour night meeting, but it's on a day that they've already worked eight, so they got two over on the eight, so they get two hours overtime, yet they only got thirty-two hours.
So, the law is that anything over forty hours is paid at time of day half or compound of time of day, you know, the way we do it. That's the law. We do not have to pay people overtime for anything over eight hours. However, I do believe that at some point in the city, they were doing that, I'm not...
That was, that was one of the, where people were taking advantage of...
Oh, because when I was in the school system, that was the, that was our rules, anything over eight, anything over forty. So, anything over eight, you got overtime. That was the law, the state law.
So, yeah, I'm not sure where that, I think it...
But you could sign a waiver to say that you were going to be a forty-hour work week employee instead of an eight-hour a day employee.
Yeah, I think employers can offer additional benefit, over and above the, what they, what anything they want, and they have a policy that pays you over eight hours, you can do that. It's an additional benefit to employees, and some employers may choose to do that. But the law is, is that you pay overtime after forty hours in a work week.
Yeah, the school district, you probably had a union contract.
It may have fallen under the union, that, that got that rule.
So, we have a, do we need a motion?
No, we have a motion to table.
We have a motion to table.
Which definitely is not debatable.
Can I ask what the motion is?
We have a table for next month. To recommend, so the council...
And then we had some discussion regarding what information you're looking for for next All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Name.
Name. Or motion carried, or not carried, or carried, or whatever.
Motion failed.
Motion failed.
The motion carried.
So, we have to wait till next month.
Well, we'll see next month, we'll tell them. We'll see this next month.
Well, we'll see tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
We'll see tomorrow night. Okay?
The motion that we just voted on, it's a table to next month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, it's next month.
But that's a recommendation.
That's a recommendation. Still has to be discussed.
I think we need to have a good session on Robert's rules for this whole council. We violated them many times tonight.
I, I agree, because every person here violates it. Every council member violates Robert's Rules of Orders. So, if we want to go down that, if we want to open Pandora's Box, we can open Pandora's Box, but these meetings are going to become very, very concise. So, every council member, every council member violates Robert's Rules of Orders.
So, that means tomorrow we'll talk about it, and if we want to table it for the next month, unless we have more information, or...
Yeah, that, that, we just, actually according to Robert's Rules of Orders, small meetings like this aren't able to table.
So, then, uh, item number eighteen, annual new class A liquor license, liquor and Class A fermented malt beverages licenses, Class B liquor and Class B fermented malt beverages licenses, and Class C wine beverages licenses.
Motion to approve the list as presented. I think Becky alluded earlier that they were all checked out.
That's correct.
They license a month and...
They're all good to go.
But it's not complete by any means, although there's still parts that have to come through.
I think we have thirteen outstanding.
So, different.
So, everyone motion approved, I don't know.
Second.
And second by Sean's votes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
motion carried.
One by the state. Next is also, and looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
First and the second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay, it is six-thirty, we will call the meeting to order, we will start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Michael Murray.
Here.
Richard Earrington.
Present.
John Flynn.
Here.
John Zbinski.
Here.
Nicole Hart.
Here.
Lamont Kiefer.
Here.
Kelly Pater. Dean Peterson.
Here.
Here.
Travis Shulman.
Take a couple years off and...
Exactly, but like you're nobody, or she's used to you sitting over here, that's probably what it is, yeah. Huh? You did? Wow, don't know his name, don't worry, sad, wow. All right, uh, is there anyone desiring to appear before the council this evening? If not, we will move on, uh, to the mayor's report. Something I've, I've noticed with all the, the roadwork now, and I had something I saw, you know, social media, just a reminder to everybody that we're at that time of the year again where motorcycles are going to be out, um, though I don't ride one, um, just please, please, please. Unfortunately, I've lost multiple friends, uh, because of stupid accidents when it comes to motorcycles. Uh, it's the end of the year, warmer weather, kids are going to be running out, uh, you know, we send our thoughts and, and prayers over to Reedsburg for the senseless accident that occurred over there when it comes to buses and kids, just, just a really big reminder that, uh, as we're nearing the end of the school year, the kids are a bit more excited, they're not paying attention to things, their, their mind is elsewhere. Um, also, we're not far away from, uh, tractor pull coming, the, the fair coming, a lot of things happening in the, in the city. Uh, just, you know, a reminder to make sure everybody's putting it on their calendars for the, uh, downtown Thursday nights. Now, those will be here before we know, right, Tina? You're ready though, right?
Oh, yeah.
So, a lot of things happening in the city of Toma this summer, um, as Joe said last night, with the pool, uh, just a, a lot of things will be occurring before the, the next meeting even happens. Um, and at the time of the next meeting, we'll be really hitting the, the stride in the summer. So, uh, as Winnebago Park opens up, again, just please, 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 make sure you're being careful on the roads, um, and keeping everything as safe as we possibly can in the city of Toma. With that, I will move on to the senior executive team.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kirk.
We have a few highlights here, some of the activities Seth was involved with, uh, we did look at, uh, one thousand four Superior, the old Phillips Pharmacy Building, tried to, um, just not overlook that, it's been vacant for quite a while. We tried to, uh, do some brainstorming, uh, with Tina in the chamber, and, um, we're still, still kind of digesting what we've talked about, but it is definitely on our radar to try to get that rented out. Obviously, with the rental lease coming up for the other building that was vacant, um, we would like to see that income, uh, stream come back. More of the activities that were dealt with also were Vanderwall, uh, we've reached out to them, and they're starting, uh, the negotiations for us with sites that are, have been identified that could be potential developments for, uh, housing. So, they're still continuing to work on that. Obviously, those, uh, negotiations are confidential, and, uh, we continue, uh, to keep you updated when we can and how we can with those. Um, we did meet with, um, a number of developers, um, franchise, uh, that was looking to possibly locate in the city. I can't remember the other one. Uh, we're meeting, or have a phone call Friday with another potential developer for the city, but they're ongoing as they come in, um, nothing I would say that's real firm, uh, just kind of those cold calls that come into us and we try to facilitate, uh, ideas and parcels that might, uh, work for them. Uh, we did also take tours of the old fire station, ambulance building. We are, um, I, I guess what I would say on that is, the general consensus from the group that met was, there's enough interest internally from city departments that I would say we're ninety-nine percent sure that we're going to maintain that, those facilities within the city and not look at...
If I can interrupt, Kirk. Just, if anybody's not aware, we've had numerous calls from, within the county from different agencies that are very, very interested in those buildings, uh, to rent type of thing, but, you know, alluding to is, is, there's a lot of things that we see as a city where we could turn around and use it and actually would, would return, uh, have a better return on investment.
So, we're still fleshing those out, um, and we hope to have some proposals, um, to you in a relatively short manner. Um, we, we want to be able to present it, um, well and clear as to what our goal would be there, so, uh, we're taking our time, uh, obviously we have, but, um, they're going to be vacant here real shortly, so we do see the need to get that moving and get it Also, um, Becky and staff have done quite a bit of, uh, due diligence on our handbook. Um, we've compiled and really put that into quite a little bit better format than what we had before, updated policies that were already approved by council, maybe not put into that, uh, handbook in a clear and concise manner. We did roll that out to the, the draft, um, no changes, um, it's just a clear picture of what we have to staff, uh, to the department heads, and they're taking that in, we've, um, kind of... We've, um, kind of told them that the next step is we've identified a number of areas of either weaknesses or areas that we'd like to address and, uh, will be coming to them specifically to their departments if it impacts them. But also, um, not to keep staff in the dark. Uh, we're still going to include everybody in that process, but we do want to specifically, uh, look at those departments that are going to be affected by any policy changes first, get their thoughts and, and continue in that process, so. It's been a long process, um, Becky's put a lot of hours into that. But, uh, again, we don't want to just throw something out there to throw something at you for change. Uh, we want it to be practical in a necessity, not just change for change, so that's kind of where we sit with, with that. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a comment Kirk, on the, on the policy change and the handbook type thing. We're going to, we're going to talk about, we did last night, a couple items, change of the open hours for city hall and change of the, um, full employee hour, hours. It seems to me that those could have been a couple items that we could have been told about ahead of time in the set report, that you were looking at that, that they seem like perfect candidates. So that, as I stated about how I feel last night, I'm not ready to move on yet because I haven't heard, it's the first time we've heard about it. But if that had been mentioned before, so I, but came to you or went to Becky or, or part of the set team and talked a little bit about it, I think, you know, I would have been more prepared.
Yep, oh, point taken. Um, we've, there, there's always the chicken before the egg. Sometimes we get things going and we don't always follow the, you know, what everybody wants to see, but we try to do our best and we learn from our mistakes. Um, I guess... For me, the, the items are, i- it's always a knee jerk reaction to ask those what-if questions. You know, what if, what if somebody does this, how's it going to affect the policy? And really what it comes down to for me is these are tools primarily focused around recruitment and retention. Um, some, like, benefits are financial, obviously too, which are great for the city and, and for our employees. In the end, we rely on the department heads to make these decisions, to create the morale, to, um, run their departments and really they're the backstop to ask those what-if questions for them. And each department varies so much, um, that...
But isn't that the, isn't that the purpose that we as a council instructed the set team to do? That in place of the city administrator, the set team came, uh, to vet all of the things and through their vetting, through their discussion of the what-ifs and the what-mabies and the what-fours, that they're bringing to us what they recommend is the, in the best interest of the city by looking at how it will affect each and every department. And that's what we asked you to do.
Yeah, you know, I think it's just, um, you know, everything, the set is new to all of us and it's kind of an awkward dance along the way on what your needs are, what, what, you know, our needs are within the departments and that. We're really still getting to learn that, um, process and we take that feedback from you.
I'm not questioning the process or anything and what you did and how you did it and how you're going about it. I just thought that the, you have this set report coming to us and I just said, these look like two good candidates to have been mentioned before that you were looking into them. That's the only point stating about this. I'm not talking about whether the policy is right, wrong, how you did it.
Sure.
Just that whether you have this little report and I know we've kind of, you're changing that.
Yeah.
You, you made it, you wanted input from us, we asked for input from you instead. And I just thought those couple items might have been prime candidates. That, that's the only question I'm raising. Well, it's not a question, it's just a comment about the set report and those couple items.
Sure. Well, we'll, we'll take that for feedback and try to do better.
Yeah, just br- bring it to, like right now, if you see something that you said that you're working on it some more, if there's any, a couple of things you're looking at, let us know, so. Be, before they come to the council, I, I would like it in advance, if possible. Obviously if after this meeting you worked through and come up with something and there's not another meeting for you to give it to and you're ready to present it, then I guess timing is just the...
Yeah, I think in this one, it, it might have been timing and a sense of urgency a little bit on our part to try to get it, you know, incorporated into the summer hours. So, timing wise, as far as taking it to the department heads and getting their input, staff, you know, it, it just didn't quite mesh this time. Try to do better. I think Richard had a question.
Um, in regards to, uh, your communications with Vanderwall and, and the developers, um, can you share with us either in open session or in a closed session, what kind of incentives you are offering to these developers?
I think in general, um, the incentives that we offer are, they're critique to the developer and what their needs are, but in general, really the only tool that we have right now are the TIDS. Um, quite honestly, I, I don't see a, a major funding of infrastructure or incentives outside of that in, in our fiscal budget right now. There's some slight opportunities, but I guess I'm more of a guy that likes to keep a little dry powder, so to speak, in case something does happen that we need, you know, economic development fund. I think Molly could go on to what numbers we have and what money we have in there, but that's kind of my approach. Um, and I think, I, I think the TIDS are really the only thing that we have to offer right now.
Yeah, the buck four makes it so that they really have to come to us. We can, we can give them knowledge of some policies and some programs available, but they need to come to us with that proposal, right?
It, it, it's very true. We're very conscientious of that. We've expressed that to Vanderwall and one of the last people that we talked to, we were very explicit on that. And, uh, and it had a little bit to do with what their needs were, but, um, we're still hopeful that, that, uh, particular project may go, but we just sometimes have to just let it develop on its own also. So we don't go outside of the boundaries that, that we have to operate in.
All of a question, um, with this, the developers, are you looking at multifamily, single family? What scale of residential or development are you looking at?
I, I, I think that same question was brought up last time and I, I think it would be the same answer. We're looking at all of those. Um, the study that came out really identified all those varying degrees of housing that was needed, so all above. Thank you.
Thanks Kirk. All right, moving on to public safety. Good evening, Tim.
Good evening, everyone. I have my written report. Fire inspectors are apparently out, uh, working on their first round. We're nearing the end of that, um, this weekend. Uh, just for note, I will be attending a, uh, weekend, uh, railcar incident response course, being that we have plenty of those going on around the country. I thought it'd be a little good time for me to go and brush up my skillset on that, so, uh, there's one in the area, so I'll be attending that. Um, I mentioned a few, uh, meetings ago that I am working with, uh, Fort McCoy on a mutual aid agreement. Um, that MOU came across my desk, I reviewed it. Um, it's back on, uh, the Garrison Commander's desk right now, uh, waiting for approval. I feel confident that'll happen and I'll keep you updated, uh, with any future, uh, changes there, so. Uh, we did respond, uh, fire wise, uh, with twenty-nine calls for service in April. The, uh, public safety building update here, uh, the project is nearing its final, uh, stages. Kind of hard to believe that I just said that, I guess, after, uh, some of you guys realized this has been probably a four plus year project.
Or more.
Fifty-two weeks ago, we, uh, break, we broke ground and, uh, we've had fifty-two, uh, weekly, uh, meetings, uh, onsite. And, uh, unfortunately I had missed one because my father had surgery, otherwise I've been at attendance to every one of them. Uh, a safety note for the area, uh, I know I'm down there almost all day long, every day right now and, uh, there are a lot of people and it goes in conjunction with what the mayor said, watch out what's going on. It's, it's very congested down there with MAFE, they're laying asphalt today. It is very busy, you've got part of the, one side of the road closed. It's just, everybody wants to look over and see what's going on and there's going to be plenty of time, uh, to see that in the future. So, uh, please be very careful down there over the next couple of weeks.
It wouldn't be bad advice to take the shortcut or take the cut around from the...
Through green acres.
Rather than...
Yeah, I, I see some people are doing it, but I think the, the most of them are, are just people going by and I, I stood out there this afternoon and car after car and you should see all the kids in their heads are out the window just looking at it and it's just like, they all want to see what's going on, right? So, uh, keep moving forward here. The, uh, the MAFEs in there, like I said, doing final grade, putting the asphalt down this week. Uh, the front, uh, red nano doors are getting, uh, installed, uh, the flooring, uh, company's in right now. They're doing what's called densifying, the, uh, the apparatus bay floors, uh, that's a little finishing touch on that. Uh, the furniture's been, uh, basically getting moved in the last couple of weeks. Uh, this is where things get interesting now and you got everybody wanting to get in there, but now we have an eight day period where nobody can drive in on the property, so, uh... Lots, lots of, lots of handwork there, so, um, as you remember back when we, uh, we bid this thing, we had to take multiple things out of the bid to make this affordable, one of them was landscaping, so, um, my crews have been helping us, uh, day and night, helping us plant trees and flowers and trying to get up all that stuff done. We salvaged, uh, our old flag poles, that was a cost of twenty thousand dollars. We basically rebuilt those, installed those all ourselves here, uh, two days ago, so that's all done if you've been by there. Uh, next week I will be in owner training with all the engineers, Monday through Friday. They got time slots for HVAC, plumbing, electrical, the, I mean, the, the whole gamma. So I'll be working with them guys all week, just trying to understand how everything, uh, flows and functions, so. Just a, just a little bit of a heads up, once, once we do get occupancy, um, I'm just, I'm shooting for early June, say it's June third, fourth or whatever. It'll be three or four days before we get, uh, that final jump, before everybody gets, uh, into the new facility. Um, before that, I'm actually sitting down, I made some policies and some rules that we're going to sit down with all the EMS crews and the fire crews and, and kind of go through everything so everybody understands we're in a new facility, there's buttons and switches and things that you can and can't do and I got to make sure everybody understands, uh, uh... How everything looks and operates and, and lays out with the, with the building, so. Um, I did want to re- uh, reiterate, and I think I've brought this up before, um, on August nineteenth, we are planning an open house, it's on a Saturday. Um, it's going to be at ten thirty in the morning, um, it's kind of a, a multipurpose day, we're going to do an open house. Uh, we're also going to be celebrating the Toma Area Ambulance Service's fiftieth, uh, years of service, uh, to the city of Toma and our, and our neighboring communities. So we got a big day planned, uh, we're going to have guided tours along with other things and we're going to have a, uh, a community, uh, chicken dinner. I was fortunate enough that, uh, a couple, three or four Sundays ago, I got a truck driver that called me and said, are you interested in forty-some cases of uncooked seasoned rotisserie chickens? So I, I found a freezer, they're in there and I found somebody that's going to cook them up for us, so we're going to throw a big feed on for everybody and, and show off the building, so. Uh, EMS wise, we're at current, currently at full staff. Uh, we have, uh, fourteen part-time, uh, employees that are helping us out. Our big hurdle over the last month was, uh, uh, the ground ambulance data, uh, process. Um, that's different than the Medicare process that was done and now was the ground, Medicare ground data process and, uh, we're a month ahead on schedule and that was all submitted and, and completed and on time. And again, I cannot thank, uh, Christie, Candy, uh, Adam, Molly and Kim, uh, for everybody's support and helping, uh, through that process and making that happen, so. Um, the last thing I just want to kind of note is, is, you know, uh, over the last year here, um, we've had a lot of changes in the city and, uh, I want to tell you they're very positive and, and my, my aspect, uh, just working with, uh, Kirk, Joe Prots, uh, all the department heads with the city. Um, this, this project was huge, um, took a lot of my time and, uh, everybody helped throw in a little bit here and there and, uh, it made the job a lot easier and it was a pleasure to work with everybody through this process, so I just wanted to throw out a big, uh, shout thank you for, for all that, so. Does anybody have any questions?
Thank you for getting us through that whole building project. The ambulance is here. Okay, moving on to the library. Ms. Irma.
Good evening. Um, statistics for April. eBook checkout, two thousand and twelve, physical library checkouts, four thousand eight hundred forty-six, giving us a total of six thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight. I have great news for each and every one of you, get ready. Summer reading program is starting at the library, yeah. And you know, we have that for adults as well as children. For many years it was just for children, but we've stepped it up. You adults are welcome, we want you there. The children's department has a lot of things going on for summer reading, so you can get your reading log and the programming starts on June the fifth. The more children read, the better their fluency, their vocabulary and their comprehension. You want to make sure that your children are reading during the summer so they don't experience that loss of comprehension and vocabulary during the summer. Storytime Mondays, two o'clock, six thirty PM or Tuesdays at ten o'clock. A bunch of stories read by Mr. Dave and if you haven't heard him, you should come in. He does a really good job and that, um, is for all ages. We have baby time on Wednesdays at ten o'clock. And I want to tell you, Lamont, do you remember when we first talked about baby time and instituting baby time? And you said to me, how many do you need to make, to be successful? And I said, as long as we have one. That number has expanded. There are so many babies that come to baby time and they're all, Mr. Dave has fans and they come in with their babies, so, yeah, that really took off. Really proud of that program.
What's the max you get then?
Um, I would probably say ten and that's plenty, so let me think about ten.
Tenfold, uh...
Ten babies, that's a lot of babies, okay. This year, we're going to have Tuesdays at noons, we're going to have Dragon Masters Book Club. So it's for kids who are second grade and up. They bring their lunches and they listen to Mr. Dave read from the Dragon Masters series. Going to see how many books they can read this summer. Still having Legos at the library on Wednesdays from five thirty till seven. If you are seven and under, you have to bring a parent with you, but otherwise anybody is welcome to come. Board games at the library, Tuesdays at five thirty until seven. Again, children under seven have to bring an adult. We also will have the tween and the teen book club and that's for kids who are in grade six to twelve. You stop in downstairs and register. We're going to give you a book, you can keep it. There's going to be prizes, I don't know what the prizes are, but I'm sure there'll be groovy library prizes. Now, the adult summer reading challenge. That'll start on June first and continue until August thirty-first. Come to the library, bring, uh, pick up a reading log or else go to our website and pick it up. Um, you will be getting an exclusive Toma Public Library prize. I know what that is and, uh, if you promise you're going to be part of this, I will tell you, but otherwise, no.
Do you have picture books?
Um, yes, we have lots of them. Are you trying to tell me you're signing up?
Well...
You want me to tell you what the prize is? You want me to tell you what the prize is? Okay, afterwards, you and me. Okay, some new books at the library. Okay, some new books at the library. A Minor Revolution, How Prioritizing Kids Benefits Us All. Still Distracted After All These Years, Help and Support For Older Adults With ADHD. And finally, The Answer To Anxiety, How To Break Free From The Tyranny Of Anxious Thoughts And Worries. Coming events, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, we will be showing The Whale. That was an Academy Award winning movie, and it's about a teacher who tries to restore his relationship with his teenage daughter. In April, we showed Man Called Otto and we had 27 people there. That was a record for us. It was wonderful. Coming this summer, we're going to be showing movies on Sunday afternoons. We'll start out with John Wick 3 and John Wick 4. Check out our website at tomapubliclibrary.org or our new sign. Okay, that's all. Does anybody have any questions for me? Anything? Comments?
Like the little picture of Dave. On the screen.
Yeah, everybody likes the little picture of Dave. There's no picture of me.
Who's that coming?
I'm going to work on that. His wife did that. So.
Really cute.
Enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Ms. Irma. All right, we will move on to the senior disabled services. Hopefully she's not nearly as bitter as the last presenter. Good evening, Pamela.
Hi, everybody. You have my written report. I, uh, want to highlight this, a couple of things. This Friday is senior celebration in Sparta at the ADRC. So the senior meal site is closed in all the county meal sites, uh, because they're having a barbecue in the parking lot. And I think that some of the county board are doing barbecuing. And so we though, even though the meal site is closed, the senior center is open. And we have 9 o'clock wellness exercise, 10:15 live music and 1 o'clock bingo, just as normal, but no meal site. If anybody wants to come down and eat with me, bring your lunch and we can sit down and eat together. Um, on Monday, Memorial Day, we are closed. Basket weaving, uh, classes, uh, the, the volunteer instructor decided that she would teach a class a month during the summer also. So if anybody's interested, you can call me or contact me at the senior center and I'll get you signed up. In front of you, you have the numbers, the yearly attendance numbers, um, in your packet. For April, the, uh, usage participants, 1,870. That compares to last year, 1,340 and the year before, 689. So it's going the right direction. And then for volunteers, uh, in April this year was 2,000, 232. Uh, last year was 138 and the year before was 43. So as you can see, major difference coming off of COVID and growing now. I, I'm not sure if you're aware or not, but the VA caregiver support group meets the first Mondays now at the senior center. And this will be the third month they're doing that. And we had to take, uh, the mystery out of Medicare program. Lots of people that I don't normally see come in for that. And Alice Ackerman, the elder benefits specialist, talks about Medicare. And, and it's for people who are going to retire or people who have been retired a long time and have questions. So, this, uh, next Tuesday, next week is a travel program by Jeremy Hunt of Landmark Tours at 4 o'clock. So if you're interested in going on some tours, you could come down and learn about them. Um, check out Facebook, the Toma, Toma Senior Center Facebook. There's lots of pictures and things on there right now. Uh, as you know from last night, the, um, 1,000 building is, as soon as you approve it tonight, will be rented out. I am thrilled about that. And for fundraising, we are working on Crazy Days Lunch Fundraiser right now. That's the next big thing coming up. Any questions?
I have one, Pam. In regards to, um, the upstairs and the senior center, we were renting, um, an office space to, uh, one of the unions. That's still being rented to them?
They're still renting four offices upstairs. Yes.
Thanks, Pamela.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, finding a building inspection report is in your packet. Um, I believe Schneid is under the weather. So, uh, if there's any questions you might have, you can always direct those when he is back in the office. Move on to the chamber convention and visitor bureau. Good evening, Christina.
Hello, Michael. We'll have to learn everyone's formal names later. Um, uh, a lot coming up, starting to get into kind of our, our busier season. Uh, Friday is our career job fair. We have just under 70 registrations from area businesses. Uh, we're, we're really seeing this time as a, a larger pull from, um, outside of the area as well. So it, it speaks to how desperate everyone is for workforce right now. Um.
Is that the largest number?
No, no, it's not actually, but people can spare people to come instead of the booths. So our largest would be about 75.
But it's right.
It's in the ballpark. Yeah, yeah. Um, to piggyback off of that, we have our, uh, headshot event, uh, oh, let me go back. I'm sorry, I stopped. So the participants for the career job fair, uh, will be about 400 of the students at the high school. And then we strongly encourage, um, parents to attend to learn about the opportunities that are available locally as well. Um, as someone who has three children in or entering the workforce, I don't know what all the opportunities are either. If I didn't have the occupation that I did. So I'm really wanting to educate those influencers of that generation. Uh, then coming up on the 25th, we do have our headshot event. Um, we have indoor and outdoor opportunities available. If you want to freshen up your, um, personal head, professional headshot, excuse me, um, that registration is open and you can still go ahead and do that. Um, our digital campaign, we are working with a new firm for some of our marketing and advertising. Um, that new campaign rolled out earlier, uh, yesterday. Um, we're starting to, to get feedback from people, uh, seeing our, our shots. We are also doing, um, uh, sweepstakes giveaway within that as well as some more content development. So if you recall, last year we had professional photographer at a lot of our events. And so we're kind of capitalizing off of that to use some of that, um, photography in, in other ways and then, um, develop content around that. Again, if you don't tell your own story, someone will tell it for you and they probably won't get it right. So that's what we're really kind of focusing on this year for our tours and development. Um, we were able to do a drive around town with Vandevall regarding our wayfinding sign program. Um, since that point, I've been able to identify, uh, locations for where signs will go, the content on each sign. Um, and we're starting the preliminary phase of what the design concept will look like of those signs. Next step will be to, um, uh, kind of do a final approval on that and then meet with the DOT to see what they're going to allow and approve for us. So very grateful to have a consultant, um, the, outside of the city budget, this was on, on our side of it. Um, that's able to help us through that process because I don't do this every day. Um, we have a number of business incentives and ribbon cuttings coming up. Um, we try to, uh, loop you in on those communications, um, as they roll out. I do have one update on our building. Um, if you recall, last time I believe we were still having some mold mitigated. That's been taken care of. Our next step is to do the drywall repair and that is proving to be a little bit of more of a daunting task than I would like. Um, I don't have someone, uh, right now, I have feelers out there, but no one committed to doing that project quite yet. So that is kind of in limbo until we're able to get the drywall completed, repainted, and then the cabinets put back up. Um, lastly, just wanted to, I think I've mentioned this before, but if not, I just wanted to put in front of you that we are looking to develop a 501(c)(3) foundation under the umbrella of the chamber. Um, to hopefully put some of our programming under that and then allow us to, um, do some expansion of grant applications, how we, how we run some of our programs and kind of take advantage of some of the tax advantages that are available to us there. Any questions for me? You know where I work. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christina.
Moving on to the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion for the approval of minutes from April 18th, 2023, the temporary Class B license application by Toma Area, uh, Community Theater to sell wine at its Brick Ship House pre-show wine tasting event on May 19th, 2023. Temporary Class B and temporary Class B license application by Toma Lions Club to sell fermented malt beverages and wine at North American Squirrel Association Squirrel Fest on July 8th, 2023. Request from Kelsey's Class Act and Smokes Elba Room Bar, uh, for special amendments to the premises description of their Class B fermented malt beverage licenses and Class B liquor license for special events on June 10th, 2023 and August 12th, 2023, annual renewal of Class A liquor and Class A fermented malt beverage licenses, Class B liquor and Class B fermented malt beverage licenses and Class C wine beverage licenses and the April 30th, 2023 cash and investment schedule.
Move to the second.
That was simultaneous.
Also Zavinsky and.
Yes, that's fine. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the committee of the whole.
I'm trying to go through the rules.
Just in the case.
Yeah, not sure exactly what to say, but I have to abstain from this because I'm an employee.
Of one of the establishments.
I don't, I don't tell.
Uh, committee of the whole, approval of hours changed for city hall. I would entertain a motion.
I will entertain a motion that we at least try the change for the summer to see how things go and to have a review done and have it come back to this by in August for a review. Back in.
Okay, so we have the motion of, uh, the temporary, so it equate to a three-month trial period, um, on the hour change for the city of Toma. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Would, would it just lapse then unless we renew it? Or is it just going to go on if we don't object?
What would be your intent on the motion?
Um, my intent would be, I, I would like to give it a try, uh, to see how it works out. I know I talked with Becky earlier today about maybe possibly doing, I called it a needs assessment. Becky called it a survey and I thought maybe it would be possible to send out a survey to, uh, the people that this would affect, um, to see what their thoughts are, to see what is working, what's not working. Does something need to be changed? What can be better? Or if it's not working, if it's not working, have it come back and we can adjust it, go back to the original if we need to. But at least we gave it a try.
Do you feel like that addressed your concern?
Well, no, I'm just curious if it, if it ends at the end of August, does it end? If we don't reapprove it or does it just go on?
I would say it, it would come back and, you know, we would evaluate it and.
Look at a reapproval or, look at a reapproval or a go back to.
Or go back to the, the prior.
Or some modification.
Do, okay, do you feel comfortable with that explanation?
I think her motion included a review in August.
Yeah, so it'd be a three-month trial period. Okay.
And would the survey go out at the end of this or, or during this or what's the survey taking about? I, I realize that's not part of the motion, but.
No, but, uh, my thoughts were when I talked with Becky today that, you know, maybe towards, when we get towards that end, um, you know, like maybe like before the council meeting, like the beginning of August, that maybe Becky could send out a survey and then that would be, that could come and be presented before the council.
So the necessitation would be that at the July, um, council meeting, we should address what, if any survey we're going to send out so that it could occur between the July and August and then be addressed in August. Go ahead, Don.
Um, the survey, does it come to us for a review or it just go out to the, who we, gonna give the survey?
It's, it's, oh, Becky talked.
Sure. Um, so when Sean called, she asked for needs assessments. I, who is that? So we, uh, it's a, it's a survey. It's an internal employee survey is what it is. Because she thought it would be useful to the council to hear about potential, um, how this has affected them in their work life. What's, you know, how has the change affected their, their, their work life balance? Whether it be the ability to get their work completed or do they hate it, uh, and they want to go back? I mean, so that you can see feedback, not just from the senior staff there, but you can get another viewpoint on what kind of result that decision had.
And what residual effect it might have to other departments throughout the, throughout the city.
I, can I make just a comment here? I still have this thing on my mind that I would really like to, and I don't know if Becky, you can do or keep track of it. People come to the counter and they give you feedback on how's it going? Do they like it, you know, four days a week? I'd like to get, if you get any input, I'd like that also to come to the council. Just to see for my.
Right. I don't know how I could formally keep a good record or anything like that, but I will certainly share with you any comments that I get.
That's what I'm talking about. Yeah. I would like to.
Be truthful and how is it going? I'll, I'll.
Yeah, I want the people to know. Because that's my concern. And it was my concern yesterday.
So we would need an establishment, well, I guess, any further discussion on this? Okay, then through this, then we would need an establishment of, uh, enacting. Are we talking June 1st? Are we talking?
I think the, the kind of go-to date we were looking at is June 1st. It gives us just about two weeks to alert the public, get the word out there, get signs out, things like that, and kind of start with, start fresh in the summer month where schools getting on and we have different schedules. So I think that was the goal, if you guys are met the goal with that.
Yes, are you?
Yes.
You okay with that? So we would, the motion would then be amended to an implementation of June 1st with a revisitation at the August meeting, which would, uh, put that at.
Uh, this would be the 15th.
So with a revisitation of August 15th. You okay with that?
Yes.
You okay with that, Don? You were the second.
And also, you know, the, the main thing is that we're going to try to save on overtime hours. I'd like that to also be part of that.
To take the.
If we, I want to see how much overtime, if we have any, because that's basically the purpose of doing this, um, on the overtime. But that was a question and I want, I, I want to know that card also.
Okay, would no further discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eight, uh, entertain a motion regarding the, uh, authorization of payment of monthly bills.
Move to the.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion from Richard, second from Lamont. All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, the approval of a building rental contract for 1,000 Superior Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Richard, second by Sean. Any discussion?
Do we have this cleaned up now?
Thank you.
I, uh, put a copy in front of you that has the cleanup for me. Yes.
Thank you, Pamela. Any further discussion?
Council's had a chance to review, I think.
Sorry? Yes, I made the, the changes. Thanks.
Christian bears.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, entertain a motion regarding the ordinance creating Article 7 of Chapter 12 of the City of Toma Municipal Code, Mobile Food Establishments First Reading. Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think we were discussing whether...
We're going to waive, sorry, waive the first verbatim reading. Go ahead, Richard, I'm sorry.
Under discussion, I think we were going to discuss whether or not the fee should be higher than the proposed fee.
So I can talk to this a little bit, can I get who was the second on that? It was Travis, and then Richard, second? Sorry.
If needed, it would also amend that motion to include the first verbatim reading.
Okay, so I also, upon request last night, went through with the help of my deputy and she did a little bit of research for us and included it here as a printout in front of you of other municipalities in the area who actually have a food truck license. They do differ, you know, so for those of you who don't have one in front of you, the city of Sparta, it looks like their license fee is $100 and if it's from an existing city-based business, then it costs them 50, whereas ours is supposed to be zero for business owners. And then a renewal fee is $100 as well, but it's so that it's the same as the new one. In La Crosse, their license fee is $100 and it looks like their additional $50 fees do along with the filing fee, if there's an outdoor stand or mobile unit with a cooking or heating appliance, they charge a little bit more, so they have a little bit different wording on theirs. The city of Altoona, which is the one we really kind of found a lot of similarities to, we liked their application, so we kind of modified it to suit our purposes, but we will be using, theirs is $125 for their river prairie access, which I assume is a place of higher concentration of people. So that's kind of where we got that 1.5. Baraboo doesn't really have a food truck ordinance, I think they're kind of where we were before we came up with this, where they're just doing a mobile transient merchant license and they charge $35 a day for food trucks to do it, I think is how they, some of these are a little difficult to read through to figure out exactly how they're doing. Wisconsin Dells is $125, so that's kind of the same as what we had suggested. Rapids is really different, I think it depends on how long you're going to be in the city doing that, so if you're only going to be here for like a couple of days, then it would be $50 for the two days. If you need it for the full year because you're going to be repeatedly being in the city selling your products, then it would be $500 for the year. So you can see it definitely differs from one municipality to another and it kind of depends, in some places maybe they charge more to operate in certain places because they're high tourist areas or something like that. I mean, every municipality kind of has to tailor this to what we have and that's kind of what we've done in ours. I do want to mention one other thing while I have the microphone. So this ordinance requiring these food truck licenses still doesn't apply to city-sponsored events or events that aren't at Red Park, which is very, the organizers that say like the Tractor Fall and the Fair, they already get inspections and require that paperwork from their vendors before they're allowed to operate there, so we don't do that again from them. So they're kind of exempted from this particular policy and things like downtown Thursday nights, they all meet those requirements with the organizer, which is the chamber. So they, I just wanted to throw that out there because we are working on some other ordinance that is out there in the future, we'll bring it in front of you for large gatherings that may address more of that in the future, so just kind of wanted to touch on that. Tim brought that up to me yesterday, I'm not sure if he mentioned it.
So does this include the inspection of fire as well? Just a...
Yes.
Yes.
I think just have a comment. The reason why I brought that up last night is that I think that for the people who have a, an establishment, like a brick and mortar, I don't want nothing taken away from there and that's why I thought maybe by upping that price a little bit more, that's what my line of thinking was and that was my reasoning for wanting to increase that.
I think we didn't want to just pull a number out of the air, you know, when we were creating this, I think we wanted to stay on par with other municipalities doing it. We did add some caveats for our current, like brick and mortars where they don't have to pay that first, truck doesn't pay a fee, they, they're not allowed, other food trucks aren't allowed to operate when so many feet of an actual brick and mortar business is to not take away some of that traffic coming through that door, you know, just to try and protect them a little bit and that's all language that's in here. So just, we did think about that when this was being drafted.
So, so now that we've talked about this and we've talked about the cost of background checks and things for our licensing and, do you really feel that the $125 covers the cost that the city is going to incur for this to include the fire department's time, even though they're not charging the city, but it's, it's all in the funds of the city? I really don't want to fall short and it'd be nice if we actually made a little bit of revenue on some of these things. We are looking for revenue sources also, but obviously there's not enough number here to make a large difference, but I'm just, I want you to be, reassure me that you...
Okay, so I can tell you especially with the reduction of the additional background checks that we were doing for everybody, that it helps on our side, so certainly from all of the work that we're doing, I would say is appropriate to me. You know, I don't know what Tim thinks about his inspections, you might want to earn him up to have him...
Well, I do have, I do have one question out of it and as this is all new to us, things pop into my mind and I guess the one thing that comes to my mind is, is who's enforcing this? So next week a food truck pops in at somebody's parking lot, who's enforcing that? Who's going and checking to see if they have that? You know, who?
Well, it's the same exact people that would be in charge and enforcing all of our ordinances, which would be the...
Okay, so they're going to have a list of food trucks that have paid up?
We would provide that for them if they, you know, if they're going out and, you know, usually what happens is someone calls me and says, we've got somebody selling, a lot of times it's the door to door stuff.
And the word will get out, it's just popped in my mind thinking like...
You know, they'll call and say, does so-and-so have a license and usually I'll look it up and I'm like, yes, sure do, they came in, it was approved on such and such date and I reassure citizens they're calling in and let them know. But if for some reason they don't, I would generally hope the police department have sent the...
And we'll be watching too and we're all in the general public every day, we're looking for those things, but...
Yeah, it's, it's an ordinance, so it's, and they're both of office that they will help to...
Because without somebody reporting it to you, there will be no investigation. I mean, we don't have, we have to have people hiding around.
Oh, and they do, they definitely do and I'm not really worried about not, people not reporting you.
Right.
You know, that, there's a food truck around, you usually hear about it. It's already happened, it happened in the last week.
Well, that's good.
Okay, so we'll definitely have some kind of tabs on food trucks.
I think so.
And where they plant themselves, because they have a tendency to skate away from the main street and park over by the chamber or by the...
If they're food is good, you usually hear about it. We, to be honest, I mean, we generally hear about it, whether it's through social media, it's very obvious when there's something going on or the farmer's market, which is very into the, you know, government area stuff.
Isn't it, don't they park over by industrial park too?
Sometimes, yeah.
So long as you can keep tabs of...
I know a lot of people that work at the DC, so I probably would hear about it too from there, so I can tell you that generally people help self-police when it comes to things like this.
So your recommendation is build the $125?
My recommendation is the 125, it falls within the normal range of, the higher to normal range.
Yeah, it does, it is a...
That's for a year?
That's for one year.
We can look, we can bring it back if...
Yeah, bring it back if you see that that's not...
The schedule can be revised at any time if you so wish.
Or if you come to us and say, doesn't look like it. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to waive the second verbatim reading of the ordinance creating Article 7 of Chapter 12 of the City of Toma Municipal Code, Mobile Food Establishments.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Sean, a second from Nellie, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion for the adoption of the ordinance creating Article 7, Chapter 12 of the City of Toma Municipal Code, Mobile Food Establishments.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion from Lamont and a second from Nellie. All those, or any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to item 11, I would entertain a motion for the approval of the definition of full-time employee, full-time employee, pardon me, from 40 hours per week to 32 hours per week or more.
Can we make the motion approve?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I'm still just not comfortable with it, moving this quickly, but...
I have a quick comment, just so that I, I'm clear from our discussion. So it's no more than 40 and 32 would be considered the full time, so there is no, I just want to say overtime, but I mean, I mean, yeah, you have that potential, but...
I can kind of talk to that. So one of the concerns was that Sean had brought up with, does that mean they're going to get overtime if they work over 32 hours? The answer is no, they would still have to work 40 hours or more in order to get time and a half or the comp time, time and a half for, for overtime purposes, that's based on the law.
What are you doing for vacation then?
They would accrue, they would accrue a vacation as based on how much work.
Because I think right now we've got it at maximum hours after so many weeks of being here, don't we? Must be changed at, I just, we did change the vacation policy.
Yeah, the way that our system works, it accrues based on number of hours worked. So it does lay out the rate at which you earn, I believe, per hour based on your...
Hour tenure.
Yeah, your...
I just want to make sure we're working together because it all fits together when we're dealing with our union negotiations and that's what's going through my head right now, that's all.
Yep.
I just want to make a comment, they are choosing 32, that after eight hours they will not get paid for and they, they know that.
That is correct and it would be a decision that's based by department. If it's a tool in the toolbox for them to use, if that employee can take an eight-hour a week pay cut, of course they would, they don't get paid for hours they don't work.
And the whole thing is to just cover the health insurance, basically, pretty much.
It's to make a full-time job more attractive if we are going to be recruiting, but could maybe get someone who works 32 instead of 40 and saves $10,000 on the budget each time we do that, and that was the purpose of having that tool and toolkit. One other thing I just kind of wanted to put out there is, this does not affect any part-time people that are currently working in the city. So it's not like if someone is currently working 32 hours and all of a sudden we're going to make them now full-time and they're all of a sudden going to get benefits. This affects no one that in that category. Everyone that's part-time is 20 hours or less right now, so they would not, they're not going to automatically get something more. We're not, we're not paying any more money, we're actually trying to save it in this particular case when there's an ability to do so. Again, it's just a tool and a toolkit for us for whether it be retention, working with people during seasonal times maybe when they could work a shorter shift and they're willing to take a pay cut, but they're like, yeah, I'll go more early, I'll take it, I won't take pay for it, that's fine, I'll go down to 32 for the next couple of weeks while we're dead, but then, you know, a week later when it snows and they're crazy outside and they need to get on the plows and they're working overtime, you know, so it just gives us a little more flexibility to manage our hours without the fear of an employee losing benefits because they drop down below. And this is very common in almost all employers, anyone I've ever heard of, that you don't have 40 hours status, the full-time status, most of the time it's 28 or 32 or somewhere in there. The state of, like I said, the IRS considers it 30 hours, so I think it would be just moving more in line with the standard, industry standard for full-time employees and gives us an extra tool and toolkit to try and reduce, work with employees too. We're not going to say, we're just going to cut your hours, it's working back and forth and trying to get people what they want and if they want less pay but want some more time off and you can afford it because the work isn't there at that moment and that allows us to do it with help here losing benefits. That's it.
Okay, and I just have another comment. Ever since I came on the council, I've heard from City Hall that the workload is tremendous and in the past people weren't even able to take their vacation time because the workload was so great. So I would hope that not too many employees are, who are going to move to that category or, this might sound a little cold and callous, but I don't want to hear about the workload being too great anymore.
So, it's a little unfair because it's not every department that this would, would consider...
Just generally, just generally speaking.
Because every department's not the same, every employee is not interchangeable, but there are certain departments that may be able to, you know, really benefit from this, whereas so in my department, I would not consider this, it's not a tool I would need to use. However, someone else may, and I'll let Kirk talk a little bit.
Really the same, you know, I don't know that it's going to be used a whole lot, to be honest with you. I think we have some interest from a couple employees, but it's still going to be in that department head to figure out if it's actually going to work for them in their department. Like I said, you know, Sean brought up a question and our employees are hopefully tenured here for 20 years, let's say, you know, that would be the goal, and throughout that 20 years, changes in their lives, you know, kids, not kids, empty nest, whatever the case, that's what we just want to be able to hopefully retain those people with this tool and that's really the goal. And it's going to change by department, by employee, throughout, you know, so many different...
I understand the whole concept and everything, but I also understand what I've heard since I came on, well, seven years ago, is generally speaking, when we talk about adding a little bit of work or can we do this or can we do that, a new policy or a new program that needs, would take some more staff time that, I don't know, everybody's booked to the max, so I...
And we're complementing this, Lamont, with the hour change at City Hall, we're complementing with increased efficiencies with our website, with invoice cloud, and we continue to try to look for those things, which will make us adjust to the needs and, you know, they just kind of all interact with one another so much.
And if I may, you know, this may have been one thing, and I'll use his name because I've known him since I was a kid, but you know, this may have been one of those things that when Chaz Date decided to retire, that if we had looked at him and said, you know, he went to 32 hours and you can keep your full-time benefits, you know, that may have been something, so then Joe wouldn't have had to go on out and hired somebody full-time, he could have reduced, you know, so again, it's, this isn't just meant for departments to reduce employees, it's, it's meant as a versatility tool.
So with that, my main concern is, I'm okay with the 32, you know, working... So with that, my main concern is, I'm okay with the 32, you know, working 32, keeping their benefits even though they're full-time, but the goal is to make sure that we can do what we need to do as far as the work, you know what I mean? And I would say if it doesn't work, then we have to look at this again, you know. Covering every department is my concern, as far as giving the services up to the, to the people that work there. So I don't have a problem with this, so long as, you know, our main goal is to make sure the city is functioning.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain a motion regarding the appointment of Sandy Bloom to the Senior Disabled Services Department Board to fulfill the remaining term of Mary Watkins', oh, I'm sorry, I jumped on, sorry. I would entertain a motion to waive the first verbatim reading of the Amendment of Ordinance Section 52-10 regarding open decks.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion to waive the second verbatim reading of the Amendment of Ordinance Section 52-10 regarding open decks.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I would entertain a motion for the adoption of the Amendment of Ordinance Section 52-10 regarding open decks.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Got it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving to item 13, I would entertain a motion for the appointment of Sandy Bloom to the Senior Disabled Services Department Board to fulfill the remaining term of Mary Watkins ending in April of 2025.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 14, entertain a motion regarding the acceptance of tally report for April 4th, 2023 election results.
Move to approve.
Second.
I'm a Court of Appeals, I think there's one line up under votes, I don't know if you're my own reporter or if that's just...
This one was just a, I retyped it, it's not a, just a formatting issue.
No, it's, I was just making sure, I don't want you turning me on, it's a little stupid.
No, it's already, thanks.
I just noticed it, so I was trying to figure out, how does the Department of Appeals have 669 votes?
That's for not sugarcoating it, Dean. What do you really mean?
It was just a formatting thing, you know.
You got her.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I guess we need to set a time of meeting date for the special meeting to set bond sale, would you want to address that?
I will. So as you recall, we missed, we did not have a quorum for our last meeting to set the sale date for our bonding.
I'll quit traveling.
I'm sorry?
I'll quit traveling.
Yes, thank you, thanks for coming back to the country so we can conduct business. So it's a really complicated process to set these dates, there are lots of moving pieces that all have to line up. So ideally, ELLRS has given us a date of June 6th as a meeting date, that's a Tuesday. So we're wondering if we can make a time work, some kind of during that day preferably? If not, if it has to be at night, we can make it at night. And again, attendance via Zoom would be acceptable, I think last year the meeting was around 15 to 20 minutes long. We have to vote to set the various different sales for our bonding purposes.
I can, I can tell you I'm not available between 9:30 and 11:30.
Okay, but af, after that, on that date?
Anytime before, anytime after?
Okay. Any other input on that date?
I might not be able to attend, I might be able to try, but I'll be in DC.
Okay.
I've never done a meeting I'm going to, so I would expect...
Sure.
The later the better for me.
Later, yeah, evening, you mean, or?
Uh, our normal 6:30 works pretty good.
I can, yeah. I think you can make that work if everyone, if we could get enough people to actually be able to vote on...
6:30's fine.
6:30 and 6:6.
I mean, anytime of the day's fine. Or so. No, not in the morning.
6:30.
Judge Judy, John.
I get that.
9:44 detail.
Okay. Anyone else? So, I mean, could you raise your hand if you could make a 6:30 meeting on June 6th? And you are voting, well, no, not for council, so one, two, three, four, five, six, okay, we would have, okay. Okay, thank you.
6:30.
Yeah, I'm assuming Becky will send out...
6:30.
It'll be...
It's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
It's 71. Tuesday.
Increasing darkness at night during the late morning.
Tuesday, June 6th, 6:30. June 6th at 6:30.
Just don't make them, they're both stupid. She said that, by the way.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Welcome to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.